That's it. I don't remember anything like this last week.
Well, it was actually a quarter.
Yeah. I don't remember anything like this last week.
Well, it was actually a quarter.
Yeah. It isn't only my second, it is the first one.
Yeah.
Come on.
Let's talk about it. I know in a speech and I swear that's close to home. I'm in the hospital now. Oh, are you serious?
I'm going to have to get that back.
I love it completely natural. I can't remember.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
They send that out for everybody. The March of the Month.
Who sent this out?
City of Mason, Paul. That's just called. I said, and it's city of Mason, Paul.
What did you watch?
Oh, we think that. I thought, well, maybe we write that out. I don't know. I'll ask it. It came to everybody, I think, so. If you guys.
I wonder if everything is written up. That's great.
Who would know about that? Was that been running for months or running from?
Well, it's from them. It's not our main concern.
The park?
We don't, well, we don't find the main concern.
I didn't say that. It says it's in the park for months. Is that what it said?
Um, well, this is the address. I'm just being honest with you. This is a paper.
Okay.
This is the address.
What was it?
When? I'm going out for work.
Hey, how are you all?
Fine.
How's it? Please do that thing back.
Yes, I did. Um, we're not, we're going to move the resolution up, but not. Not yet. Okay. Well, yeah. Can you watch your hair?
I know. You weren't here the other day.
This is the first time.
The first time. I was talking.
Yeah, that's it.
Well, that's it. I didn't have to be over there. Oh, did it? Off the. Do you have house?
Congress.
They are.
Yeah, my house. I don't know. You can have mine.
I'm sitting in the. I'm sitting in the.
She has to.
Um.
Man, he looked.
I think he made it. He was a sheriff.
Is that how it turned on? Okay. You know, like. Hello? Mine seems to be working.
I don't know. We'll see. Trying to introduce all this new technology.
Um, I think it's McBride. You better ask. You better ask. I don't. It's Mick something. McDale McBride. Oh, McDale Brian. Don't know. I don't know.
Hello?
All right. Testing one, two. Thanks, Denny.
It's cold in here.
Not really.
Ready? Eric? Are you ready? Are you ready, Denny?
Hi.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Mason. Today is our business meeting, September 28th, 2020. It's time to call this meeting to order.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Present.
Councilmember Stricula?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Here.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Here.
Mayor Grossman?
Here. Thank you, Dan. You may have noticed it might sound like our clerk, Lisa R.'s voice has changed, but no, it's just the same that Lisa is expecting, and she is training Dan Chambers to take over while she is home caring for her beautiful little baby who's coming anytime now. So tonight could be very exciting. Yeah. She told us not to tease her about that. Okay. All right. So we need to go into executive session for a little while, and we'll come back as close to seven o'clock as we possibly can. You'll see our screensaver up on the live stream, and you'll think, wow, what a boring meeting, but we're really an executive session meeting. So I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of discussing acquisition and/or disposition of property and employment and compensation of public employees.
So moved? Second.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Where are we going? Where are we going to? I'm going to bring my coffee that you just poured. I'm going to bring my coffee that you just poured. It'd be cold, I think. I need a fancy city of Mason. Yes.
Pass the mail, Mr.?
Yeah. Oh.
Right? Thank you. How are you?
Yeah. You're good, man.
...
... And what is the one that you have?
I don't know. What's my name? What do you do? I'm looking. I'm going to go on here. I don't know. All right. I'm having a...
It doesn't... I think it's a... It isn't a problem.
Um... So it's... About... Yeah.
Yeah, it was...
Yeah.
But it is a problem.
Yeah.
It just depends on how much time it takes for them to... They're getting there. Yeah.
You don't have to... Um... I'm trying to... Oh.
It's just a... I want to take...
Yeah. Yeah. I love it. I'm not... Oh, cool.
No, it's the...
Yeah.
It's a deal with... We're doing that.
Yeah. I can talk.
Yeah. Sixty-five, six. You're done. It was wrong when we had a time.
Yeah. And now... And... You know, ours. But which is it? You're... It's... So, we're like... We're... Yeah. I don't need... Oh, good. Like, wait, thank you.
Yeah.
Boy, you can tell. Um... Uh... Uh... Yeah. Uh...
Yeah.
Right now. Yeah. You're... So, yeah. Hi, I'm... Um, hi. I do... So, I can try to get this on. I mean, it's...
Okay. Or is he...
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Another... Um...
Oh. Oh, the present.
So she... That's good. She's... And they get in trouble. I think... So, I would love to... And she said... Like, this...
You... When I come in... Yeah. I got... Like, you know... Oh.
Yeah. You know, the... I'm not...
Yeah.
Yeah. That was... Yeah. You got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, hi. Yeah.
Yeah.
We got...
See, I'm gonna be... Great. Okay. Very...
Well, I'm... Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
They just have to...
Well, you probably know what I mean. Like, now, like, you know... Now, so, I mean, where do you go? Now...
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm too much of a... I think... Well, I'm... Right now, I'm...
Absolutely.
All these points, guys. All these points are nine. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Um, four, eight, nine, ten. The only four... Where...
The next...
You...
You're saying...
Yeah. You can't... Yeah. Say, that I want you to do. And I'm really... Okay, and here... Hey, Tom. So...
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. Oh, yeah. I know. He's... I was fired. Yeah. I was... I was just... I snapped. Okay, then. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I don't know. Um, I don't know. I don't know. Where... I don't know. I mean, that's... Oh. Yeah. I know.
Okay. Oh, I remember. Yeah. Word. Well... Yeah. Yeah. To, uh... Are you... I don't know.
I'll mention... Well, it's... Yeah.
But it's dumb, dude. It's... There's a...
Myself.
But that's not...
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm... She's... Hold up, yeah.
It's, uh...
Or, yeah.
It's...
Always like fire.
They... Actually... I see.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So... You're... Yeah.
Yeah.
We use... Once...
Yeah.
He's... Five minutes. It's...
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Then I'll...
Oh, yes. Yeah. Wow. Yeah. I'm...
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
They... I made...
I... I need to do the finisher. Sometimes, just, uh...
Oh, it was... Is it time to...
Yeah. I can take it forward. Yeah.
Individuals and all together, but not together?
Playing about two days. Because they've been good at work. We were there two days on state. Because it was just so... Yeah. Yeah, right.
You don't have extra pen, do you?
Extra pen. I have one there.
So, pen?
I'm gonna grab a refill here on my plate.
Yeah.
I'm gonna find one. What's that? There's one up here. You need some? You good or you need a score?
I am. I need some now.
Yeah, I got a round. I got a round two. Well, I'll buy one.
George, you getting the champagne? Service.
Yeah.
Yeah. You said, uh... Um...
What about you?
Are we ready? All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We need a motion to reconvene into regular session.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. We are joined today by Pastor Phil Blodgett. He's going to lift us up in prayer at the podium. Thank you, Pastor Blodgett. And following that, we'll go right into the Pledge of Allegiance. And so if you could stand with us.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the chance to gather and to go about a community's needs in the business of our community. God, we thank you for the great city you have placed us in. God, we thank you for our leaders. Give them wisdom as they deal with the matters at hand. God, we ask for our community as we continue to deal with this pandemic that you would be with those who have been affected directly or affected by a loved one. Even those who have maybe experienced a death because of this. May you comfort them. May you give them a peace only from you. We ask also for those in our community who are on the front line, that you would give them strength to go about their job, which is much harder now. God, we pray for our schools, that you would strengthen our teachers and our administrators. Lord, thank you for just the chance to reopen for many of our kids and a little sense of normalcy for them, Lord. We thank you for those who protect us. We thank you for their sacrifice for us. We thank you for their families and what they have to sacrifice. Lord, may you protect them. May you guide them and help them to know that they are appreciated, that they are loved by their community. God, we ask all this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the fine of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item six on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Item six on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the September 14th council meeting.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Item seven. We have a swearing in ceremony with some firefighters. Well, we'll turn this over. Chief Brian Brumajin joins us and he's going to tell us all about this good news.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here tonight. We're here to conduct the formal swearing in of four fire and EMS professionals, Matt Davies, Kelly Murray, Colton Nye, and Logan Snow. These individuals were hired together on October 14th, 2019, and represent significant advancement for our department and for the city. As you are aware, we have made a significant commitment to improve the level of full-time staffing in the fire department over the past several years. We thank you for your support in this initiative. The outstanding character and integrity of our staff is apparent to me each day, and our community is being provided with a higher level of service than ever before because of your commitment and theirs. I'll call up each firefighter individually and then I'll have the mayor come up and deliver the oath of office to all four together. Prior to coming to Mason, Matthew Davies earned his firefighter and paramedic certifications and gained experience working for Liberty and Westchester Townships as a part-time firefighter/paramedic. Matt, come forward. In his time with us, Matt has proven to be a valuable member of his crew and is fit in well with our department. Matt is enthusiastic about training and learning everything he can in his new role, proving that a positive attitude cannot be learned, but skills can. We look forward to watching Matt continue to develop throughout his career with us and his parents, Elwin and Marie, and his brother Tyler are here with him tonight. Kelly Murray, firefighter/paramedic Kelly Murray, come on up. Kelly came to us with previous experience from fire departments in Northern Kentucky and Claremont County. She has shown extensive interest in the profession since her time as an intern with the Central Campbell Fire Department, and her passion is evident in her everyday work in Mason. Kelly tackled her probationary training requirements fearlessly and is fit right in with accomplishing our department's mission. We are happy Kelly chose to join our department, and we look forward to what the future holds for her. Kelly's children and several friends are here with her tonight. And Colton Nye, I asked Colton to come up. Shortly after completing the Fire and EMS Academy at Great Oaks, Colton was hired as a full-time firefighter/EMT. Colton is a military veteran and has a wide array of experiences to share from his military service, his time as a defense contractor, and his training in law enforcement. Fortunately, he agreed to join our department and is nearly complete with his next adventure, paramedic school. Colton has adjusted well to this challenge and has quickly become a go-to member on his crew. He has a bright future ahead of him, and we look forward to having him as part of our team for a long time. His parents, Kevin and Michelle, and his fiancee Megan are here with him tonight. Logan Snow. Logan came to our department also after completing his training at the Great Oaks Fire Academy as a firefighter/EMT. Logan has also fit in well with his coworkers. His humorous approach keeps people laughing, including me, throughout his shift. Logan has shown a strong work ethic, a trait he picked up working on his family's farm at a young age. Logan plans to continue his EMS training next year by attending paramedic school, and we look forward to supporting him in that quest. Logan's wife, Sarah. His parents, Stuart and Leanne, and his mother-in-law are here with him tonight. We look forward to supporting these individuals through a long and successful career, and we formally welcome them to our family. Mayor, will you please come forward and deliver the oath of office to our newest firefighters?
Mayor, while you're coming forward, I'd like to ask any firefighters, certainly any family that are out there that would like to observe this, if folks can just, I know it's awkward, but if they can group over there to the extent they're comfortable, please come in.
Right. Thank you. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Sorry about that. The Constitution of the State of Ohio. The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Mason. And the Rules and Regulations of the City of Mason Fire Department. And that I will faithfully the duties of firefighter. Thank you and congratulations.
If you guys want to go out and if you want to get pictures with your family outside, that'd be a good place to do it.
Lisa, I made sure they know how to deliver a baby, so we're good.
We've had a few babies born since I've been on council. It's pretty exciting. We have a good team here at the City of Mason. All right. So we have a resolution tonight, Resolution 2020-11. Are you finished, Brian?
I will handle the resolution as well.
You're gonna handle the resolution? Okay, so I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Mayor, Resolution 2020-11, proclaiming the week of October 4th through the 10th, 2020, as National Fire Prevention Week.
Chief Brumajin.
Thank you, Mayor. As you heard, Resolution 2020-11 is recognizing Fire Prevention Week, which is observed each year during the week of October 9th. This year's theme for Fire Prevention Week from the National Fire Protection Association is "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen." According to the NFPA, cooking is the leading cause of residential fires and related injuries in the United States, and that is something that we do see here in Mason as well. About half of reported home fires start in the kitchen, and 66% of home cooking fires start with the ignition of the actual food or other cooking materials. With that in mind, the fire department recommends these safety tips to prevent cooking fires. Obviously, never leave your cooking food unattended. Even if you have to leave for a short time, please turn off the stove. If you're cooking anything, check it regularly. Remain in the home while the food is cooking and use a timer to remind you that you are cooking. Always keep an oven mitt and pan lid nearby when you are cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid right over the pan to smother the flame. Turn off the burner. Leave the pan covered until it's completely cool, and I would recommend calling the fire department. Maintain a kid-free zone of at least three feet around the stove just to prevent burns or in any area where hot food or drink is prepared or carried. Traditionally, during Fire Prevention Week, we do host open house events at the fire stations. Unfortunately, this year, we're not going to do that. But we are looking to develop a virtual tour so that we can engage the public online. So hopefully, that will last not just through Fire Prevention Week, but on well into the future. It's been an exciting time to be kind of innovative in some of those ways. So with that, Resolution 2020-11 is recommended for adoption.
Thank you, Chief. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? We need a motion to adopt. So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? I felt a little bit singled out about the whole cooking thing. I don't know if anybody else felt that way. But anyway, I guess this is this year's theme. Was that a national theme or did somebody at my house?
Yeah, that's a national theme, but they might have went national.
I was suspicious of my family. Okay, thank you so much, Chief. Yes.
Chief, I don't know where it comes from, but I think it's really cool. My 11-year-old daughter now wants to be a firefighter. And so I thought to myself, I know you guys have those open houses, and I hate to hear that they're not gonna be. Obviously, I understand why. But are you, maybe later in the year, gonna do something? To have people come in? And I remember we used to bring the truck here and we asked to be able to do all that good stuff too. And because she even asked about that, like, when am I gonna be able to do that?
Yeah, we are, as soon as things open back up a little bit more in that regard, we're certainly looking at ways we can be safe and do those.
Yeah.
But it breaks our heart to not be able to do some of those too, so.
Hopefully later this year.
As soon as we can figure it out and make it all work, we'll get right back on that.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. And thank you for everything you guys do.
All right, anyone else? All right, let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. Thank you. All right, item nine on the agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a couple of items here just to report on and then want to introduce some other folks. And this is for the community at large, and there's some urgency to this. As council's aware of, we have been finalizing McKino Park and common ground at McKino Park. There's also been a longer-term initiative there for a Field of Dreams. The Mason Challenger League, which is an inclusive youth baseball organization here in Mason, applied for some months ago a State Farm Neighborhood Assist Grant to secure $25,000 in grant funding. Very busy in getting the grants. Usually, these are long shots, but you apply. Turns out, out of 2,000 applicants, McKino Park and the Challenger League was one of 200 finalists for this grant. And this is the fun part. Those finalists are then narrowed down to the top 40 vote-getters. And those top 40 vote-getters each receive a $25,000 grant. The voting is done online and would encourage every council member, your friends, your family, in town, out of town, out of state, to go to imaginemason.org. On the banner, there is a link to the State Farm voting link. And between September 23rd and October 2nd, you can vote. Everyone can vote up to 10 times a day. We're encouraging all 10 of those votes to go to the Mason Challenger League. In fact, and I did this, I was with some family and I made everyone vote. And you can send all 10 of your votes with one click. And the link on the website takes you right to the one we want you to vote for. So it's very convenient. Anyone can vote, no matter where they live, must be 18 years or older. We are hopeful that if we get the word out rapidly here between community members, friends, families, that we can help the Challenger League secure that $25,000, which will go a long ways towards further developing common ground and making that Field of Dreams a reality. So please, spread the word and vote every day, 10 times a day. Also wanted to report Heritage Festival. Unfortunately, this year was a virtual experience, but we had over 1,700 community members that were engaged in this year's Heritage Festival and wanted to thank several of our partners. The Historical Society, obviously. There was a video tour of the Alberta Green Museum, Mason's historical marker trail. There was artwork that was created. There was a trivia activity. There was poetry contests. The top three winners in all of those categories will receive a $50 Come Together Mason e-gift card that can be used at Mason Small Businesses that are participating. For council, the Warren County Municipal League is meeting Wednesday, October 21st at Shaker Run Golf Course. If anyone's interested in attending, please let Kendra know. And also to announce, it's that time of year when we get a lot of calls, and ironically, there seem to be fewer calls this year. But Halloween is, as it is every year, held on October 31st. That's a Saturday this year. Hours in Mason are 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's rain or shine. We are encouraging folks this year to be mindful. If you wish to participate at your home, you know, turn on a light or turn on some decorations. We're also encouraging folks that are doing the trick-or-treating to be mindful of that. If lights are on, that means they prefer not to participate. You can go to the city's website. We have a couple of other guidelines how to, you know, this year have an extra measure of safety if you're participating in trick-or-treat. And as always, the police and fire departments will be out visiting neighborhoods, helping to distribute candy and encourage safety. So that may be an opportunity for Councilmember Chance's daughter to get a visit with the fire truck. And then finally, wanted to introduce and have another announcement in relation to the Mason Manta Race and have the city's Parks and Recreation Director, Chrissy Avery, here to give us an update on some of the activity there.
Eric, thank you for the introduction. It's very exciting to be here in front of City Council tonight. This weekend, on October 3rd, we are celebrating the 17th anniversary of the swim team. We're also working through the continued construction of the new Mason Municipal Aquatic Center. With me tonight is Ken Heiss. Ken is the head coach of the City of Mason Swim Team, the Mason Manta Race. We have a short video we'd like to show you. The video celebrates recent accomplishments, but also debuts something new. Kurt, can you help me with the video?
Hi, my name is Chrissy Avery. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Mason. Today, I'm out here at the new site of the Mason Municipal Aquatic Center. We're also thankful that Mason City Council approved the construction of this new amenity for the city. This venue is going to be the site of many of our programs and events. We're excited to celebrate the 17th anniversary of the city's swim team, the Mason Manta Race, and we cannot wait to see what the future holds.
Hi, my name's Ken Heiss. I am the head coach of the City of Mason Manta Race. We are standing here at the Mason Municipal Aquatic Center. We are excited about this premier amenity to help bring us into the future. And we are so excited to be celebrating our 17th anniversary of the program. Our program has grown from 110 swimmers all the way up to 300 swimmers. And we've gone from a regional-level program all the way to a national-level program being ranked fourth out of 3,000 teams in the United States. We have got 14 swimmers ready to represent our city at the U.S. Olympic Trials next year in 2021. We are so excited to unveil this new logo that will take us into the future.
So there was a process in place for the new logo design. Several local graphic designers presented the city with a variety of logo options to choose from. The logo you see tonight up here on the screens was selected because it visually unites the City of Mason community with the growth and accomplishments the team has had over the past 17 years. Ryan Brazelton is an expert in the field of logo design and is also a parent with children on the swim team. Ryan has designed logos for nationally-recognized franchises and universities and provided this professional service to the city as a donation. We're excited to debut the logo tonight and to begin incorporating this new logo publicly. I have a gift that I'd like to present to council while Ken gives some updates on the swim team.
All right, thank you. What an exciting time for our city. I appreciate you having me here. It's always a pleasure and an honor to talk to you. When the city brought me on board 17 years ago, I first heard the tagline, "More than you could imagine." And that truly has been the case. I would never have imagined that we would be ranked the number-one team in Ohio and the highest-ranked team in Ohio's history. Never would have imagined that we would be fourth in the country and the highest-ranked city-owned team.
city-owned team in the history of USA Swimming. In fact, we're the, one of the only teams, city-owned teams that's ever ranked in the top 500. So it's quite the accomplishment. Never would I have imagined that we would have 14 swimmers trying out for the Olympic Team, with a few having a very, very good shot. Never would I have imagined that we would be not having the Olympic Trials this summer. But we're still holding strong for next year. And I just can't thank you enough for the support of city council, the administration, and the community, because I think that was just the key point on, helped our success over the last 17 years. And now we have this awesome new logo. Our original logo, just a little history, came in 2003 from a team-wide contest where the kids designed it. And so clearly, we have outgrown that. And now we have this professional logo that will help elevate us into the future. And I can't wait to see our swimmers with the new logo on their suits and on their gear. And even more importantly, I can't wait to see the tons of new swimmers that we're going to be able to provide the opportunity to join the team with the new facility. So thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Chrissy Avery and Coach Heiss. Wow, we are proud of you. Number one-ranked, city-owned team in the nation. Wow, that was news to me tonight. That's very exciting. Congratulations to all of our wonderful swimmers and coaches and our staff. Chrissy Avery is our project manager at the pool, and she's doing a marvelous job. And next summer's going to be so much fun for our families here in Mason. All right.
I was just going to ask, was the designer here, his name was Ken? I didn't catch his last name. Okay.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Yes? Yes.
Yeah, Ken and Chrissy, thank you guys so much. And there's accolades, right? Because we were looking at this pool and it was a heavy lift. I mean, and, you know, but if you think about that, you ended with saying we're the one of even the top 500, is that correct? To think that we're fourth in the nation and to be able to, I see this pool not only as recreation, but an opportunity to bring people together close to our downtown and for them to even be able to visit, you know. So thank you for your dedication. And part of my thought process is you can't go anywhere, though. Because this guy is like, he is sought after nationally. So I've been trying to get on air to get like a contract put together to keep you here, because obviously, you're doing something right. So thank you so much for your service, because that's obviously, you know, we have athletes and they get in the pool and they can perform, but it also has to start with coaching. So thank you for the dedication to our swim team.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Coach. I'll show you our shirt that we got. Very cool, right? Wow, really nice. Okay, well, thank you. We're going to move on to item 10 on the agenda, which is recognition of visitors. Do we have anybody waiting online?
Mayor, forgot I had to speak into this. There are three people that are attendees to this meeting virtually. I need to remind them, if you wish to speak at tonight's meeting, you need to hit the raised hand icon on your computer so that we know that you'd like to speak.
Okay, and before we start, to all our visitors, we're so glad that you're here or joining us online. We have a very short agenda tonight, so if it's at all possible for you to wait till the second round of recognition of visitors, that'd be very helpful for us to get through our business. However, if you're in a rush and you need to speak up at the top, you certainly may. But if someone has something about the legislation on tonight's agenda, that would be very helpful to let them go first. Yes, come on up. And when you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Karen Wexstein, 4239 Serpentine Way in Parkside, Mason, Ohio. I'll just be super quick. I just wanted to point out that this council chamber is not a church and not everyone in Mason believes in Jesus and not everyone in Mason even believes in God. Holding a Christian or any prayer in this setting is divisive and actually unwelcoming. It is also out of touch and tone deaf. Please consider a moment of silence instead. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think Mrs. Hafte has someone for us.
Mayor, I do have somebody online. I don't know if they wish to speak to a topic later this evening or now, but if we could invite them in now to find out. I'm going to mispronounce his name, I know, but Mrs. Robin McLuggidge. If you would like to address council, you're welcome to do so at this time.
I unmuted it. Hi, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, hi, my name is Robin McLuggidge. Don't worry about the name, it gets confabled all the time. I've been a Mason resident since 1985. I live at 5545 Red Fox Court. And maybe I should have gone at the end, I'm not sure, but I raised my hand just to get in. But I'm actually, I wanted to talk about what was Mayor Grossman delivered at the last council meeting at the end, when that 19-page document was submitted into a public document. So Mayor Grossman, you project yourself as a distinguished leader. And you mentioned at the beginning of that, that you're in a leadership group. As you know, transparency is something that a good leader should exemplify. First of all, I did not appreciate that my name and address was being made public in that September 14th document that was submitted as a public document and the assumption that you made about me. I'd like to know what your motivation behind selectively providing street addresses of those collecting signatures, not only as individuals, but also of the businesses and the owners in town. I feel that this document was 19 pages too long and was full of intimidation. And I felt the document was indirectly asking the community to boycott the businesses and owners who supported the recall.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the agenda at this time? I'll follow up with Mrs. McLuggidge later. I see a hand back here. Bear with us. Hi, come on up. State your name and address for the record, please.
John Looker, 111 East Main Street, Mason, Ohio, right downtown. The reason I'd like to address, Mayor.
Yes.
The council is we have promoted, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, the Veteran Banner Program. We sent in 47 banners this last Friday to be produced, and they will be available in down the street of Mason Montgomery in Tylersville for the month of November and the month of May of next year. Again, if you're interested in the banner program, please don't hesitate to get ahold of us. I'd like to thank Diana, TJ, and Josh for their work on the Veterans Committee, as well as Eric, Jennifer, Jenna, Dan Chambers, Lisa, for all your work on getting this accomplished and get it out there. So thank you very much for all your efforts and be able to get this out for Veterans Day in November. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Looker. Is there anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes.
John, first of all, I just want to thank you for your dedication to the veterans. You've been a great help to the city. We are, he is part of the Veterans Committee for the city, and he is a great asset to the committee. We couldn't do it without you. But while you're here, you might want to go back to the podium. I know this is a little early, but I'm sure you wouldn't mind, Mayor. You know, we have some really good news to announce, and I would like you, you know, instead of waiting to the committee reports, do you mind if, John Looker? Okay. It's fine. Would you mind telling what the good news is? Because I think you would do it so much more justice than any of us would. And coming from you, it means so much.
Well, I'm hoping you're talking about the email that I received this morning.
Oh, I don't know what email you received. Has to do with the Purple Heart?
Well, kind of. As Blue Skies representatives, Diana and I serve on the Blue Skies Committee. And I just got an email this morning. We actually do, we brew beer out at, what's the name of it, Diana?
Greenworks.
Greenworks, out on Cox Road. And my picture is going to be on one of the beer cans this next coming. I don't know if that's the good news you're talking about, because Jennifer.
That's good news for me, John, I like that.
That isn't what I was talking about. But I love that news, though. That is wonderful.
Well, Jennifer kind of asked me not to talk about this, but since you're asking, I'm assuming the other good news is that we are going to dedicate the City of Mason as a Purple Heart City on November 9th of this year. So we're tolling the preparation works. And we are meeting again this Wednesday morning to finalize what we're going to do. But my understanding, and I participate in the Honor Guard for Purple Heart, so I'll be part of the dedication. But we have four other cities that we're doing also in that month. So, but they said this is going to be the biggest one. Now, from what I heard from our meeting the other day, there's going to be 50 flags, Purple Heart flags, all over the city. And then there will be, at every entrance to the city, there'll be a plaque that states that the City of Mason is a Purple Heart City. So, thank you very much. Sorry, Jennifer, she forced me.
Mayor. And John, real quick, I think it's important for the audience and people watching to, Mr. Looker is a Purple Heart recipient as well. So, you know, being that, obviously, as Diana or council member Nelson alluded to, that this is near and dear to him, and he's been working extremely hard to get this done. So thank you again for your dedication and thank you for your service. So thanks for that, John.
Wow, we can all say we've met someone whose face is going to be on a beer can. That's so exciting. Who knew? Wow, you're a celebrity. Thank you, Mr. Looker. We're so glad you came. All right, let's move along to item 11 on the agenda, ordinance 2020-86. I need a motion to read by title only. So moved. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, Jeff?
Approval of the final plat for Tower Park PUD.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Tower Park PUD is located on Mason Montgomery, or sorry, Tylersville Road, where the WLW Tower is located. This drawing shows the existing, the large WLW Tower is at this location. And then there's a smaller tower off to the west side of the site on, at this location. This shows the concept plan that was brought before Planning Commission and Council late last year. And so tonight is the plat. This color code shows some of the flag lots that go out to Tylersville Road. The roads in this subdivision will be private, and so they all need to have frontage out onto a public street. There are seven buildable lots. And this went to Planning Commission at the August 4th meeting, and it was approved contingent on dedication of 50 feet of right-of-way on Tylersville Road, as well as submission of a subdivision's contract and performance bond. And with that, ordinance 2020-86 is recommended for adoption. I'll answer any questions that you have.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to say that I will not be voting for this. I have, I still have a lot of concerns. We had residents from, I believe it was the Greenbrier and the Birchwood subdivision come to one of our meetings to voice concern in regards to this development due to the towers and the ice and the snow that falls from the towers and how far this ice flies. I have some concerns as to the dangers of it. You have, you know, children that are going to be running around, adults running around, you know, eating at restaurants even in cold weather. And if, you know, an ice chunk falls and hits them in the head, it could kill them. And so I will not be voting for this today.
Anyone else? Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Counsel member Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Counsel member Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Counsel member Chance?
Yes.
Counsel member Nelson?
No.
Counsel member Bradburn?
Yes.
Item 12 on the agenda is ordinance 2020-87. I need a motion to read by title only, please.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Well, okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Jeff?
Authorizing the city law director to file a petition for appropriation of property necessary for the State Route 741 widening project, determining public exigency in declaring an emergency, Sandra L. Eves.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. With this project, which is widening of 741 from Spyglass, which is the private drive just south of 42, up north of Bethany Road to Weldon Drive. We had 24 parcels we had to acquire right-of-way, and we're down to the last three, one of those being the railroad, which you've already passed, I believe, at the last meeting, an agreement to take care of that one. And then the last two parcels are the ones before you tonight. We have, one that really we have not been able to make contact with after a year of trying emails, calls, letters, personal visits to the site to get them to respond. And the other got their own appraisal, and it was about six times what our appraisal and appraisal review were for the site. So this is kind of a last-ditch effort that we typically try not to take property by eminent domain unless we actually have to. In order to keep this project on schedule, we need to clear the right-of-way by mid-October, which is why there's emergency clause on both of these, both of these ordinances. And with that, I will answer any questions that you have, but both ordinance 2020-87 and 88 are recommended for adoption. And like I said, they're with emergency clause to keep the project on schedule.
We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing there is none, let's call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Counsel member Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Counsel member Chance?
Yes.
Counsel member Nelson?
Yes.
Counsel member Bradburn?
Yes.
Counsel member Stricula?
Yes.
Okay, item 13 on the agenda, ordinance 2020-88. I need a motion to read by title only, please.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Authorizing the city law director to file a petition for appropriation of property necessary for the State Route. necessary for the State Route 741 widening project determining public exigency and declaring an emergency. GVS Ohio Holdings One LLC.
I need a motion to read by title only, please. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. Excuse me.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Okay, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Item 14 is ordinance 2020-89. I need a motion to read by title only, please.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
An ordinance accepting the proposal for the design and construction oversight of the irrigation system at the Mason Golf Center for $57,825 and authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This ordinance is, as Jeff just said, really for design. It does not get any construction done on the golf center at all. What we've done is had this proposal for all 22 of the holes. That way, we can move forward with the irrigation replacement and, and, and not just pick the 18 holes like the, one of the master plans that we looked at showed. So this, we're really at a situation where we have really an old irrigation system. Half of the system was built in the early 70s. The other half was in the mid 90s with the additional nine holes that was added. And it's been cobbled together and kept running by our management firm with a lot of used parts in the last five to 10 years to keep it running. We did have a situation earlier this summer where we had a green, it was actually 8 West, where we almost lost the whole green and had a significant effort just to keep that green in play for the remainder of the season, just because the irrigation system can't be trusted. So with that, technical choice came well recommended. They're, one of the, the members in the technical choice proposal has done work out at the golf center. They're very familiar with it. And, and this also, this proposal also, so it'll be all the bid documents that we need to do the work. Right now, work that's occurring, or any bids that are going out or for next fall. So we're hopeful that we can get this design done. And the goal would be that we could get on contractor's schedule for maybe this time next year with any luck and, and at least begin the construction of the new irrigation system next year. It's possible that the, there's not a lot of contractors that do this work. So it may be until 2022. But, but our goal is to try to do some of the work next year and get started with it. This, this was included in the 2020 budget. And with that, 2020-89 is recommended for adoption. I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
So it's to my understanding that the design, the golf course design that has been worked through is not finalized. And there's a lot of residents who live on the golf course that are wanting to, you know, continue with some input, not happy with some of the designs. Since it, the design isn't finalized, is it, is it a smart move to do the irrigation system without? Because if, if, you know, the holes don't stay the same, because we've talked about moving around holes, are we going to just have to dig up this system? And we've just spent $57,000 that we shouldn't have spent.
Well, the, the design will be for all the holes and, but it won't, it doesn't mean we have to bid them all out. So what we could do is, as the master plan moves forward and we get ready to bid it out, we could nonperform certain holes. We could change some of the design. But this will get the bulk of the work designed so that we can at least get some cost estimates together, know where the, the new mains need to go throughout the system. And we're really at a point where the, it's, it's really cobbled together system. It's what's called a typically open system. It's controlled by, to turn the valves on and off, it's through smaller hydraulic hoses. So we have a jockey pump that runs all the time. It's just a really outdated, like 1950s technology type system. So this would be just, just having the design done will let us get a better cost estimate. And we'll, when it gets to construction, we'll try to limit as much rework as we can possibly do with having some of the master plan changes in mind that I think people agree with. So.
Councilmember Nelson, if I could just add, it's, it's come to the point where that, while that sounds like a lot of money, the 57,000, the risk of losing some of the holes because of the irrigation system far outweighs any work we may have to change or repeat to modify in the future. It needs to be done to just save the golf course.
Thank you. Great question. Anyone else? I think, Kurt, you mentioned as the master plan moves forward. I'd like to emphasize that that's, that's an if and an as. So we haven't made no decisions. I just want to reassure the golf community. We saw a proposal and we got a lot of feedback and we're still hovering in the same place. No decisions have been made, but we do need to get that irrigation system designed and underway. Right? Thank you so much. All right, let's call the roll unless someone else has anything to comment on this one. All right, call the roll, please.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Item 15 is ordinance 2020-90. Motion to read by title only, please.
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, Jeff?
Amending the investment and depository policy.
And this one's for Jennifer.
Yes, Mayor and Members of Council, this is really just a housekeeping item. The City of Mason is really controlled, the state controls what types of investments a community can invest in. From time to time, they open the options up or increase the options available. The city's investment policy was developed in 2013. They more recently came out with a change that allows us to invest in municipal bonds with a maturity not to exceed 10 years. That's different what it currently is at five years. So this kind of allows us, again, to just diversify our investment portfolio, allows us to, to focus again on safety as always, number one, liquidity, and then our return on our investment. And I know Joe Regelsberger does a great job monitoring and making sure we comply with all of our state statutes with. So with that, ordinance 2020-90 is recommended for adoption.
Thank you. We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion on this one? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Item 16 is ordinance 2020-91. Motion to read by title only.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Sullivan Environmental Technologies in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for the purchase of two grit pumps and replacement parts for the City of Mason Water Reclamation Plant.
Wonderful. Thank you. Jennifer?
Mayor and Members of Council, we're going to move from investment to sewer grit pumps. Currently at the water reclamation plant, we have two pumps. They are aging, much like a lot of our equipment out there. It's hard to believe how old that facility is, but it does operate under some very abrasive conditions, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So this is part of what has been included in this year's budget, as well as part of our five-year capital improvement plan. Like many, much of the equipment at the facility is a sole source, built that facility. The equipment we purchased at that time will dictate what replacement parts can, we need to purchase in the future. So we've, this is the second time that we've taken a look at these pumps. The first time we were able to rebuild them. We cannot rebuild them a second time, so we need to go out and purchase new pumps. With that, ordinance 2020-91 is recommended for adoption.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Item 17 is ordinance 2020-92. We need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Howe Rescue Systems, Inc. to provide rescue tools for the fire department.
Jennifer?
Mayor and Members of Council, if most of you have heard, we refer to it as the Jaws of Life. It's actually not just one piece of equipment. It's multiple tools that are used to extract individuals from vehicles that have been wrecked. Our current device or equipment is, was purchased in 2006. It has a life expectancy of 15 years. So we're, we're really at that. Our department, fire department, took a look at the equipment, evaluated different options for it, and ultimately have recommended moving forward with the Howe Rescue System. It is, again, a sole source vendor from Genetis Rescue at a price of roughly $45,000. It will include all the rescue tools, as well as all the accessories needed. With that, ordinance 2020-92 is recommended for adoption.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Any council discussion? Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
If it pleases council, I'm requesting a motion to add ordinance 2020-93 to the agenda.
Make that motion.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, that was Councilmember Hunter Law. Okay, let's call the roll on that.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
All right, so now that's item 18 on the agenda. It's ordinance 2020-93. We need a motion to read that by title only.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
Mayor. Approving the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Mason and the Mason Police Association and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreements and declaring an emergency.
Jennifer?
Members of council, this mic is bad or something. I have to hold mine way up here versus you, Jeff. Currently, the city has a union contract with our police department for the sergeants, the lieutenants, as well as the officers. That is a three-year contract. It expired in July of this year. We were able to successfully, our union, and negotiate an additional three-year contract. This legislation tonight accepts that contract. We know that the union has voted on it as well, and they have approved it as well. With that, we are recommending ordinance 2020-93.
Thank you. We need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any council discussion? Let's call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Council, if you are amenable, I need a motion to add ordinance 2020-94 to the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Thank you. Ordinance 2020-9, oh, we need to call the roll. Excuse me. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Oh, dear. I see a worried look from Eric.
I'd ask some patience, maybe while Kurt is getting copies of that ordinance, maybe we could go to committee reports.
That's a great idea. Okay, so wonderful. So 19 is added to the agenda. Do I need to do anything procedurally to skip 19 for now? Nope. All right, let's go on to item 20 then, committee reports. Let's start with Board of Veterans Affairs, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think we covered, obviously, the, the big announcement. Mr. Looker brought that up. And again, I want to thank him for his efforts and the work that he's done to bring up the Purple Heart City to Mason. So we appreciate that. I don't think, I mean, you can't top that. So there's nothing else to really talk about, so.
Oh, we're, Mayor, we're just really excited. This is such an honor for our city to become a Purple Heart city. We're so passionate about our veterans and what they've done for us, and this is such a great way to honor them. So we really hope everyone comes to the meeting in November, and to honor them, we're having a little gathering beforehand. So please show up and pay your respect to them.
If I can just join in on the chorus there. So I agree that John Looker has really, until I really got involved with council, even though we've lived here together a long time, I did not know what that guy does all the time pushing, you know, for the veterans. And it's just, it's amazing the work he puts in now that you're in here and you're seeing what all he does. So thank you again, John. And, you know, he's just one of many Purple Heart recipients here. Most don't want to be acknowledged that. And so we're thankful that John's willing to do that because that's not always, you know, something that they want. So but we've got, I think the city staff's done a great job of planning something for the whole month of things to do there that we discussed. So that's pretty exciting for the whole Purple Heart City recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the great news. Thank you for living out your passion, Mr. Looker. He's back in the corner. Thank you. We're glad you stayed. Okay, downtown committee met?
That would be me.
Okay.
Mayor. So, thank you. So our last meeting was back on February twenty-seventh. So we got side-railed quite a bit because of the COVID nineteen, and the city basically shutting down. The staff got cut back so much that it limited what we were doing and some of the partners that were working with us. So I know that the chamber was working on stuff. Everything's pretty much been put on hold for that. We did get a staff update with the McBride Dale Clarion, the zoning. They were talking to the steering committee and getting, I guess, a new map of downtown and how that zoning may look. We saw a rough draft on that on February twenty-seventh. So for us to be able to get together and put our eyes back on this again and see where we're going was a good idea. I think that that plan is still three to six months away, I think is what we had said roughly. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's hop back to item nineteen, which is ordinance twenty twenty dash nine four. I need a motion to read that by title only. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Jeff?
An ordinance accepting the transfer of land from TEJ Holdings, Inc. to the City of Mason for one dollar and authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents.
Okay, Jennifer, do you have something to add to that?
I can speak to that briefly.
Okay.
Opportunity for the city to acquire some property to secure the future irrigation source for the golf course is actually, and I'm not sure how many people are aware of that, we realize a considerable savings because there are wells located along the river, and we have access to river water that's then pumped up, held at the golf course, and used to irrigate the golf course in lieu of purchasing water wholesale. Acquiring this property gives us additional leverage to secure that ability into the future, and it's a great bargain at a dollar.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading, please.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gilb?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunter Law?
Yes.
All right, item twenty-one is old and new business. Is there anybody who has old or new business to share?
Mayor, I do.
Yes.
First, I just want to say happy birthday to Eric, whose birthday was yesterday. Maybe at the end, we can sing happy birthday to you. So I have always been an advocate for our city on home rule authority, especially when it comes to centralized tax collection. The City of Mason has the right to home rule authority under the Ohio Constitution of nineteen twelve. Last week, House Bill two forty-two passed, which preempts a municipality from passing a plastic or paper bag tax. The key word here is "preempts." It is not whether or not you are for the bag tax. It is another example on how the state of Ohio encroaches on our right to home rule authority. Home rule authority gives a voice to you, the residents of Mason, to be able to change or amend the charter, vote as a community to enact laws that the majority of the residents feel are necessary to govern our city. Home rule authority is very important and must be maintained. I will be watching in hopes that Governor DeWine vetoes this bill, but I will keep you posted. I think it was, it's appropriate to talk about Senate Bill two eighty-six, being that we just swore in some firefighters, and it's Fire Prevention Month. Senate Bill two eighty-six was introduced by Senator Schaefer, who is a Republican of Lancaster, and it authorizes an income tax credit for volunteer firefighters who purchase firefighting-related safety or protective items. So we might want to make sure that our volunteer firefighters are aware of that. And then just another quick reminder that October first is a deadline to sign up to file a municipal income tax return with the state of Ohio. If you file a business tax return, I ask that you do not sign up for this service and to tell your accountant not to sign you up for this service because sometimes the accountants do it without your knowledge. Please continue to file directly with the City of Mason. Aside from the excellent customer service that you will get from the city income tax department versus the state of Ohio tax department, Mason will not have to give a percentage of the assessed tax to the state of Ohio. If you filed, which would be the case if you filed with them. Filing municipal income tax direct with the City of Mason keeps Mason tax dollars in Mason, which is how it should be. So if you have any questions about this, please feel free to contact me. I'll be happy to talk to you about it.
Thank you. I always enjoy hearing your reports about what's going on in the state. Does anybody else have old or new business?
No, I'm sorry, Mayor. I have one more quick thing.
Yes.
I noticed that in our packet of information, the APC's annual dinner in the information is, has the wrong date, and I just wanted to let council members know in case you guys were planning on attending. It's actually the twentieth and not the twenty-first. Correct. Yes. Yeah, in our packet, it has the wrong date.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I have one item. As promised, I made revisions in the report that I issued to council last time, and I got a little bit of feedback from the public through our city manager, and I made some corrections. There were a few typos. And I added a better addendum to it. This looks really thick, but that's because I am including as an addendum item, this binder, which is our report from the City of Mason about the small business legislation that we did. So report's still about the same length, but there's an addendum there to make it a little more clear in case you need to do any fact checking. And that's all I have. Okay. All right, next item is item twenty-two, unless anybody else has anything. Twenty-two, which is recognition of visitors. If you'd like to come up and approach council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, my name's Kristin Gekie. I'm a resident of Mason, six-five-six-seven Farborough Court. Good evening, Mason City Council. I've been a resident in the area for twenty-three years. In the last seven and a half years, I've been a resident of Mason. I'm a mom of two teenage girls in our schools here, and years ago, I used to run a blog, masonmetoo.com, where I talked about all the great things going on in Mason. I did it for about nine years, so I really am passionate about our city. Raising our family here, I have always been a registered Democrat. But that doesn't mean I did not support our local government, who have been mostly governed by Republicans. I never thought much about party affiliation or local politics until this year. Just because I'm a Democrat does not mean or discount the fact that I'm a contributing member of the community. We pay our taxes. I volunteered in our schools. I have volunteered with a local theater group. I volunteered with the Live Like Maya Foundation, which is a pediatric cancer foundation here, which was started by my friend Bonnie. She's here in the room tonight for her daughter that passed away from pediatric cancer. So I've been, I've also even worked in our school system as a substitute and a cafeteria worker. So I've been a proud participant of this community and a contributing member. And I myself thought that Mason City Council was supposed to be nonpartisan, but I feel like that's not been the case. Would I wanted to know if it's a rule that you have to disclose your party affiliation when addressing this body? In a recent report that Mayor Grossman entered, I guess, at the last council meeting, Laura Della Contreras was named for not disclosing her party affiliation. And I don't recall that happening at these meetings. And why should a citizen have to disclose their party affiliation at any time when addressing council? Is there an answer to that? I also want to touch base on the September fourteenth report on the Mason recall of Vice Mayor Gilb and Member Hunter Law. Nowhere in this report does it say who actually authored the report, who actually worked on the report, and where all the facts came from. Not putting a name on who wrote the report is showing lack of any transparency. In the future, no one would even know who the author is. Since Mayor Grossman submitted this document into the public record, I assume you're the one that authored it. If so, you need to attach your name to the document for the public to see as anyone else who helped with it. I would like to know if anyone else outside the body of this body had any influence on that report as well. Did anyone else gather statistics, write the report, or contribute to the report? And it would be great if each council member could go on record to let the City of Mason residents know if they read the report in advance of it entering the public record, or if they contributed to it in any way. I'm very upset that this report is using McCarthy-like tactics to call out neighbors, community members, voters, and businesses in Mason just because they exercise their lawful right to sign a recall petition and to gather signatures. Just because you may not be happy that a recall was started does not mean that it was fraudulent or unlawful. Even though the recall did not go through, it should be a wake-up call to city council and the voters that we were not happy with what has been happening in our city. Instead of taking this as a learning experience and a way to reflect on why a recall happened in the first place, you've set out to disparage anyone who had may signed up the petitions, gathered signatures, and the businesses who may have supported it. To me, this seems like a violation of ethics. This report is nothing but voter intimidation after the fact. In the future, if another recall were to present itself, voters may be wary to sign for fear of having their names and addresses posted by their own mayor and to be publicly ashamed for having participated. This is not okay. Tating a picture in this report that it was the liberal Democrats who are the ones behind the recall is also not accurate. There were many Republicans who also supported the recall, reporting on individual people and businesses who obtained signatures, to me, is bullying. Last I checked, there are only Republicans on city council. If the recall had passed, then voters would get to decide who would fill the vacated spots. And if what all of your uncorroborated data suggests, the person elected would most likely be another Republican. And this may come as a shock, but not all Republicans and not all Democrats think the exact same way on issues. To me, having open and honest discussions is what I expect from our elected officials, no matter their party affiliation. If you are going to submit a document into the public record, you need to get your facts straight. You mentioned Julie Womack in this report. Had any council members or our mayor attended the peaceful protest that was organized by local Mason high school students, you would have witnessed that the speakers were all students. I attended the peaceful walk with many other community members. Julie Womack did not speak at this event. Many Mason community members walked in support of George Floyd's murder, for Breonna Taylor's murder, and in support of social justice and Black Lives Matter. If you would have been present and heard the student speeches, you might not have printed that lie that you put in this report about Julie Womack. OPSU was not an organizer of this event. It was a student-led event. And I'm very, it's shameful that you sully this peaceful walk by lying about it in this report. Was one of the goals of the report to disparage our local businesses and community members? Our community wants to lift up our small businesses who help Mason thrive and bring new visitors to our city. We want them to succeed. By naming these businesses, are you trying to steer people away from patronizing them? I am thankful for the small businesses that have made Mason their home. I hope they will continue to be part of our community. This report has so many inaccuracies and a one-sided attempt by Mayor Grossman to try to make herself and the other council members look like they were somehow wronged. You should be embarrassed to have put this out in the public record. Please know that our community is no longer going to let reports like these go unanswered and that we are watching what you're doing and how you are behaving. You have embarrassed the City of Mason and continue to do so with a report like this. This report to me is a sham. It is not, it was not signed, does not cite sources, it's filled with opinions, innuendo, and even overt lies. As a taxpayer and resident of Mason, I expect more from our council and our mayor. This petty display of falsehoods is a stain on our city, an embarrassment to all of us. I have no doubt that we will soon have a twenty-page report to sift through, trying to refute anything I say and disparage me and anyone else that disagrees with the mayor. Mayor Grossman, you are the one that owes the City of Mason, the voters, the community, council members, Chance, Stricula, and Nelson, and the Mason small businesses that you are attempting to smear this report in apology. This inaccurate and disrespectful piece of fiction should not be kept, should be kept, chronicled, and shared to show how not to respond to citizens who are voicing their rights to lawfully participate in our democracy. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gekie? That needs to stop. Thank you. I'd like to respond to some of your questions, if that's okay. I'm assuming you read the report?
I have it right here, yeah.
Okay, did you read it before you wrote your statement tonight?
Did I read it before? Yeah.
The report? Okay, so you noticed the citations at the very beginning of the report?
Cited, you cited like radio shows, but you didn't go through and document at the end. To me, it's not like a report that.
I added footnotes. I ran out of time to do footnotes two weeks ago. There was a lot I didn't know until the petitions were actually filed, which, by the way, were public documents with names and addresses on them, and they were public documents that were circulated by circulators, some Democrat, some Republican, some non-party affiliated, that had, that you certified, if you were a circulator, to be absolutely true. And I'm just going to go through my list here. But those were public documents on the public record. I got them from the Board of Elections. And to provide some context for people who may not know what the report is, it is a report, it's an analysis that I did based on the recall by analyzing the petitions that were filed at the Board of Elections. And when I did that, some geographic and demographic patterns emerged. There was a response in the report to the theory posited by an inquiry reporter that it symbolized a split in the Republican Party or the Republicans on council. And there was a split over an issue, but it's not really a Republican Party split issue. And that is part of the significance for identifying whether someone is a Democrat or a Republican. What we know from looking at the petitions is that over half of the petitions circulated and signatures were from Democrats that are very involved in a group called Organized Progressive Standing United, and I believe that's ten out of sixteen. So we did a lot of research. There are a lot of footnotes in here. The report was never meant to disparage anyone but simply state some facts. And I would ask, you said the report is very one-sided. I would ask, would it ever be appropriate to share a counterpoint to the recall campaign? Would that be fair? It seems as though you and many of the people in this audience, who I recognize are some circulators, had no problem disparaging innocent council members and putting on paper, putting on paper fraudulent reasons for a recall that were not true and plastering all over social media.
Point of order.
Plastering all over social media, things that were not true about what we were working on to help small businesses. So it's fair to give a counterpoint. All right, you asked the question, did anyone outside the body write the report? I had a lot of help from a variety of people, from the Board of Elections, from my colleagues on council. But the most help that I got was really from public statements made by people involved in the recall on social media and in the petitions themselves by looking at that data. McCarthy-like tactics, I disagree. It was never meant to disparage. We identified geographical patterns, and we used names and addresses.
How did it make you an expert to identify geographical patterns? Just curious.
An expert, I'm sorry.
Well, you're saying you identified geographical patterns.
Well, if you could, if you could imagine a heat map, and I, that's above my pay grade. I can't really make a heat map. But if you could imagine a heat map, you see a geographical pattern which showed a heavy amount of involvement by the three members of council, Stricula, Nelson, and Chance. If you look at their neighborhoods all around their.
Point of order, assigning.
Dozens, dozens of signatures and lots of circulators, particularly in Member Nelson's neighborhood.
That's not correct. Point of order.
Everything in the report is absolutely correct, and it is footnoted carefully. All right. This can't continue. The audience is being disorderly. She asked me some questions. I'm trying my best to respond. I'm doing the best that I can, and I did the best that I could to lead this council and to pass some great legislation to help small businesses. No one was attempted to be disparaged in a report. All it is is a report. It's factual. It states a hypothesis. It shows evidence, and it draws a conclusion based on the evidence. All right, Ms. Womack, I have contacted her personally. I sent her a letter in writing. It was not a lie in the report that I thought she was a speaker at the event. I actually was at the event, but I couldn't see the speakers because of the half-wall over the stairwell.
They were all student-led.
So I thought I heard her name introduced, so I wrote her a letter, and I let her know that that would be corrected in the report. And I didn't mention any children in the report. I didn't think that was appropriate.
Student-led. It was all student.
It was student-led. Thank you for letting me know. It is all corrected in the report. You know, I think that's everything that I wrote down. So if there's someone else that wants to come on up, we can see the next visitor, please.
Can I make a motion that we're not going back and forth with our residents and to save it to the end?
I think that's fine with me. I just wanted to address Mrs. Gekie right out of the gate so that, Mrs. Gekie, excuse me, it's hard to hear. Mrs. Gekie, so that people watching along can have some context if they don't really know what the report is, because most people that will be listening to this haven't read the report. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Tong. My address is four-seven-two-one Country Downs Drive, Mason, Ohio. And so I'm here this evening also to address the report, Mayor Grossman, that you submitted to council at the last meeting. The report was prepared by you. I think you've acknowledged that this evening. And so in this report, you chose to introduce me to council members and the City of Mason without ever speaking to me, and you completely misrepresented my objectives and my motives for participating in the recall effort. Because of your actions, I felt it was necessary to come here tonight and provide a proper introduction of myself and explain why I chose to support this recall effort of Vice Mayor Gilb and Councilmember Hunter Law. So let's start with the information that you found relevant to share with the public. First, you stated that I'm a liberal Democrat, and I'm assuming you made that assumption because I chose to vote in a Democratic ballot for the most recent primary election, which is true. What's also true is that I've voted for equal numbers of Republican and Democratic candidates in the last, four out of the last five elections. in the last, four out of the last five elections, and I voted Libertarian in the most recent election. And since it seemed so important to you, and in a manner of transparency, I am very proud to say I'll be voting for Biden-Harris in this upcoming election. So I wanted to just get that out of the way. Next, you found it relative to share where individuals are spending their money and how they're donating to organizations. So that included the Organized Progressive Standing United, the OPSU, which you mentioned many times, you mentioned it here tonight. So yeah, I have chosen to support that organization. I've also chosen to support many organizations that I feel passionate about. So in the last 18 months, I have spent time and money supporting Matthew 25 Ministries, Upspring Cincinnati, the SPCA, St. Jude's Children's Hospital, Cincinnati Children's Hospital, the Dragonfly Foundation, Magnified Giving, the Community Service Fund, the City of Mason Fire Departments, and many other local nonprofits that I'm not going to name tonight for fear that this council, and specifically you, Mayor Grossman, will attach some sort of political leaning to their, to their agenda and to what they do for this community. So lastly, Mayor Grossman, you provided a fictitional narrative full of assigned motives for why the community, why the Mason community members supported the recall effort. These motives included that, quote, "The recall presented another chance to elect a liberal Democrat to council." That, quote, "The large Democrat support for the recall is explained by their partisan interest in electing a liberal Democrat to Mason Council." And that the recall was a collaborated effort with three council members, which you identified as, quote, "the three." In response to these misrepresentations, I would like to provide my actual motives for supporting the recall effort. First, I will let you know that outside of attending college, I have lived in Mason my entire life. I chose to come back to Mason to start my career and to raise my family. I have a deep affection for the community and the people that live here. I care about this city a lot, and I care about the people regardless of their political leanings. That's why I was shocked when I logged into a Zoom call to watch a city council meeting on April 1st of this year. The inability of council members to work in collaboration, the lack of leadership, and the appearance of a targeted effort to shut down certain council members was frustrating to watch. As I continued to watch over the next several meetings, it became clear to me that certain council members were not interested in open, transparent collaboration, and instead were more interested in individual service and self-preservation. Members of the Mason community were actively providing feedback during these meetings, and council members rarely if ever took accountability for their behaviors. I believe the actions of Vice Mayor Gilb and Council Member Hunter Law have directly contributed to the negative culture of our city council, and neither of them have acted in the best interest of the community members for which they were elected to serve. That is why I chose to support the recall effort. That is specifically why, and I'm telling you why, so you don't need to tell me why I didn't. Mayor Grossman, your hypothesis was wrong. The recall effort was not a political play to elect a liberal Democrat. The recall effort was the direct result of the behaviors, choices, and actions of Vice Mayor Gilb and Council Member Hunter Law. Furthermore, I spoke to many individuals who supported the recall effort. I spoke to each individual who provided signature to the petitions I circulated. I spoke to other individuals who also circulated petitions. Never once did the names of council members Chance, Stricula, or Nelson come up. Never once did the idea of electing a liberal Democrat come up. Never, not once. How do I know the motives of the individuals supporting the recall initiative? Because I spoke to them. And if this is the proper forum, I'd like to ask, or take this opportunity to ask Mayor Grossman, how many people listed in this report did you actually speak to?
Um, I think one. One bothered to call me.
No, no, no.
One bothered to talk-
Not our job to talk, contact you as the leader of this city.
Yes, one person bothered to talk with me and ask me questions. The rest made public allegations, and I don't know what the case is for the rest of these-
You answered my question, thank you.
One, one out of how many?
Thank you. So I was interested in knowing how many people that you spoke to, because I'm unaware of a single resident that you reached out to, to contact. So rather than making assumptions, assigning motives, and creating a hypothesis for why 967 individuals are actively supporting a recall effort for sitting council members, maybe you could actually reach out and start a conversation, build a bridge, or make a connection with your community. Maybe you could ask your residents how you can serve them as a leader. Your report states that you want to end divisiveness and move forward together, yet you assign the labels to your own council members as the three and the four. What an incredibly divisive choice. As the leader of our council, I would expect you to foster the idea of a united city council to serve all of the residents of the City of Mason. And furthermore, and I, I don't know if maybe this is a question for city manager, I do think it's appropriate that, that Mayor Grossman should, should apply her name to this report. It should not be presented as if it came from a, a third party or from an unbiased source. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Audience, please. Audience, please, please no applause. We're trying to run an orderly meeting. The three and the four were just terms to consolidate and make the reading of the report and the writing of the report more efficient, so we didn't have to write the names over and over and over again. That wasn't meant to be divisive, it was just meant to be a definition. Yes, please state your name.
Yeah, as some of you know, my name is Laura Smith. I reside at 6768 Grand Oaks Court in Mason. And I also want to speak to you tonight about the 9/14/2020 mayor's report that was introduced into the public record at the last council meeting. I was dismayed to see my name personally, as well as the organ, the involvement of two organizations that I sit on the board with, mentioned incorrectly. The conclusion of the report was that it was an effort of liberal Democrats to take over city council, as well as to invalidate the results of the 2019 election. I am a lifelong Democrat. I serve on Warren County Party Central Committee, I am not going to try to deny that. Yes, there are Democrats that live in Mason, Ohio. Depending upon how you look at the raw data, Mason is anywhere between 38% to 45% Democrat. It's a challenge to figure out in Ohio, since we don't really register for parties, which is why I found it curious that circulators were labeled as registered Democrats or registered Republicans. This was not an attempt for Democrats to take over city council. To accurately represent the partisan makeup of our city, roughly, you know, 60/40, you would think council should have at least two Democrats. There are currently seven Republican members sitting on council. Even if the recall was successful, and Joy Bennett was elected to one of the open seats, we would still be short one member to get proportional representation. Also, 42% of those signatures were gathered by Republicans. If this is a true Democratic takeover, why would Republicans choose to participate? Organized Progressive Standing United, OPSU as mentioned in the report, is not a liberal Democratic PAC. We are nonpartisan in our mission statement, which you can find on the website that is listed in the report. You might be surprised to know that we have many former Republicans actually sitting on the board. We have supported Democrats in the state and senate races because we felt that those particular candidates aligned with our values. We also supported the nonpartisan Mason City Schools levy, and we supported Joy Bennett in 2019 when she ran as an independent for council. We also do not receive funding from ActBlue, as was mentioned in the report. ActBlue is a credit card processor. We pay them money, it is not the other way around. While we supported the recall effort via our social media, let me be clear, we did not initiate or financially support the recall effort in any way, shape, or form. The Mason Deerfield Democratic Club was also mentioned in the report as NDDC. Again, while we did support the recall on our social media, we did not initiate the recall or financially support it in any way, shape, or form. The final assurance I wish to address is that there was no reason for the recall. Our small businesses did indeed suffer because council failed to act in a timely manner. The mayor states that only two cities acted before Mason did, Springbrough and Lebanon. As Warren County's most populous city, we should have been first to act. This is yet another example of council's disregard for developing a vibrant downtown that I have seen in my 15-plus years living here in Mason. I went out and got a gift card to Wildflower. I went out and got a growler at Common and some beer at Comet Pizza. I did more to support small business in March than you did. Vice Mayor Gilb accepted the vice mayorship and almost immediately decided to run for clerk of courts. He accepted his office on December 1st and had to have his petitions filed by December 18th. He clearly knew he was planning to run before he accepted the vice mayor role. Personally, that makes me question, what is his desire to do the job and serve people here in Mason? Or is he just looking out for that next big office he wants to run for? Council Member Hunter Law's personal financial irresponsibility is enough for me to believe he should not be on council, or at the very least not sit on the Economic Development Committee. However, that didn't bother me as much, because the voters knew that he owed $20,000 in back taxes when they elected him. The main reason I feel he should be recalled occurred in this very room about a year ago. From the council dais, Council Member Hunter Law stated that "he does not represent me because I didn't vote for him." That assertion is appalling way for any politician to think, let alone state out loud in an official capacity in a council meeting room. If he is not going to represent all people living in Mason, he does not deserve to be on council, in my opinion. Thank you for my time this evening, and I truly hope that you remove this report from the public record. It is embarrassingly inaccurate, for one. For another, singling out individual citizens by name and address for merely utilizing their right to circulate petitions in a recall that we are granted in our charter is alarmingly close to voter intimidation, something that this council has already been sanctioned for in 2007. I thank you for your time.
I did not have any real prepared comments tonight, but I have a friend, sorry.
Could, could you, yeah, you're gonna have to pull it up a little bit, and you'll have to state your name and address too, please.
Karen Kopak, 3829 Crooked Tree Drive. I don't know how to do it, I'm afraid I'll knock it over. Hi. I have a friend who had planned on coming tonight but ran into some kid family problems, so I have her statement, and I'd like to read that. I also would like to just take a minute and thank Mr. Looker for everything that he's doing here with the vets. I really appreciate that. My husband is a vet, and I would like to say on the record, happy 24th anniversary in front of all of you, so you know that you're my witnesses that I remembered and I'm here. And he is currently out of the country, so I'd like to say that tonight. This is from my friend Julie Swalick. Do I need to give her address? Because if I do, I need to go get her, my phone, because I don't have it here. Or can I just read it?
Go ahead and read it, we'll, we'll figure it out.
All right, thank you. And I have to put it out here. Okay, so this is from my friend Julie Swalick, who just couldn't get here tonight and can't be on, on the line, online. At the last council meeting, a report was entered into the record that I would like to address. Not knowing who wrote the report, it is not possible for me to know what the intent was of the author. As someone who was mentioned, however, for one, circulating recall, recall, recall petitions; for two, being a Democrat; and for three, being a donor to a PAC, I find it difficult to believe that there was anything honorable in the author's intent. I am certain that the many inaccuracies in the report are being addressed by others, so I will limit my thoughts as they pertain to myself. For the record, I circulated petitions to recall Council Member Hunter Law and Council Member Gilb, because I was disgusted by the conduct of these two council members, as well as two other members not currently eligible for recall. And because I knew electors would want to sign these petitions, this is what democracy looks like, and I was proud to take part in it. For the record, I have never been more proud to be labeled a Democrat. It is, however, irrelevant with regard to a recall that was a bipartisan effort to correct the current council's inability to govern a city at large. When our community was hurting, especially small businesses, the mayor and three other council members did not, in my opinion, act in the best interest of their city. Immediate relief was required. I can't even put into words what I witnessed watching these council meetings. For the record, my donations to causes that are important to me are also irrelevant to this recall effort. That being said, I'm a proud donor to the OPSU, and I am honored to know many grassroots leaders in the City of Mason who, whose only interest is in keeping this city a great place to live for all of its residents. Mason deserves better representation than what we have witnessed since the last election. Nothing demonstrates that more clearly than a report submitted to, to the record that seems to have no other purpose than to intimidate its citizens and attempt to smear reputations of people who are using their rights to make change. And it's signed Julie Swalick. That's her statement, and then I would just like to add a couple of things of my own. I too was mentioned in this report. I only got two lines, so I guess it doesn't really matter. I'm not really going to go over those because I find it petty. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to, to focus on one particular section of this report on page 10, number six. I would not like to use this person's name as mentioned and/or say the address, because to me, it just calls them out again. So I'm trying to, if you don't have the report, just try to know that I'm going to insert, like, Mr. Smith or something, okay? Number six. Former Mason council member, Mr. Smith, at so-and-so address circulated two petitions each for Hunter Law and Gilb, collecting 29 signatures on both of them. Mr. Smith is not active in the GOP. Mason gave Mr. Smith owned businesses, owned companies, money, and economic incentives to help him purchase and refurbish two Mason commercial buildings conditioned upon future earnings tax revenue from the lease of those buildings off of space to other companies. This particular section of this report really kinda, I don't know, it just got to me, because I think anybody out here who might have a business, insert your name, insert your address, and insert, if you don't do, look what we gave you. And if you don't do what we like, we may not give you that. This to me, if that makes sense, this to me has real implications on future businesses that may want to open here, and that's a real problem for me. I mean, there's a lot of things in here that are a problem for me, but that one really got to me. I really, I really, really think that some soul searching needs to be done here, and I truly would call for resignations. I really would. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Randy Steigbauer, live at 5358 Hidden Creek Circle, right across the street, whatever direction that is. Where do I want to start here? For the, you, you had a whole statistical analysis section that all, except for the arithmetic in it, it all seemed to me read as speculation. You, like you were just trying to figure out what was going to be the reason for their actions. You seem to be stating the fact in another area where you said those same Democrats supported Mrs. Bennett in her unsuccessful 2019 council race. And I was just curious how you knew that? How would you know if one of the residents voted or didn't vote for Mrs. Bennett? You know, it said somehow you have, were you, were you able to look up?
Do you want me to answer that?
Later.
Okay.
Find out shocking, because I didn't think that whoever I voted for was public record. You keep talking, keep mentioning that you want to be a leader. And, and what I can't reconcile is how this report helps you to do that. After writing that, you know, my, my simple question is, you know, what, what did you want to happen? And then kind of similarly, what did you- And then kind of similarly, what did you think was gonna happen? Because those two things are, might not be the same thing, certainly. And you know, and so, you know, just, it's flabbergasting, just reading the entire report, you know, calling out the residents like you did. Just like the previous woman said, it just seemed so petty. Doesn't seem like you really do want to be a leader. Thank you.
Mr. Steg Bower, to answer your questions, you wanted to know why, you wanted to know how I knew certain petition circulators supported Joy Bennett in the previous election, and that was all over social media, it was obvious. Okay, I don't know who they voted for. No. What you can see from the Board of Elections website is whether someone pulls a Democrat or Republican ballot in a primary election. And that, it doesn't say in the report anywhere that I know who voted for whom. And then, what was the purpose of the report as far as leadership? The purpose of the report is the public needs to understand the truth. And I'm, and I'm listening to people over and over ask me to take it off the record. The public, the public has a right to know that there's a counterpoint, there's another story. Okay, next, please.
My name's Bonnie Collins, as a lot of you know. 4801 Appaloosa Trail, Mason, Ohio. A lot of you guys know that I lost my daughter back in 2017. Shortly after her death, I formed the Live Like Maya Foundation. Our mission is to raise money for pediatric cancer research and to help families locally who are dealing with pediatric cancer. Maya lost her battle after a six-and-a-half-year battle with leukemia. She passed away on October 3rd, 2017. And as she lay on her deathbed in Memphis, at St. Jude in Memphis, we were televised on a big screen into the Mason courthouse. As friends, family, even people we didn't even know, but they supported our family, gathered to celebrate her life, her fight, and we watched as they proclaimed September 25th, 2017, Maya Collins Day through Mason, in honor of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, which is the month of September. Eight days later, October 3rd, Maya passed away. Exactly a year later, I spoke to all of you at City Council about childhood cancer. It actually just popped up on my Facebook yesterday, as our fine city of Mason recognized September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And you all took the time to remember, celebrate, and honor the life of Maya. I received these beautiful plaques for both events. This is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and the other one is proclamating September 25th, 2017, as Maya Collins Day, as part of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. That said, I love this town. I love all of you. I love all of my dear friends. I love people who I don't even really know, who have shown support to our family and embraced us with love. I'm proud to live in Mason. The Mason businesses have gone above and beyond to support our family and lift us up in a time of need. I can just walk into any business and ask for a donation, which I do all the time, and I'm sure it drives you all crazy, but you, you know, give me the shirts off your backs, so thank you. When I say I live in an amazing village and I have an amazing village, it's literal. This is truly an amazing village. That said, I do feel the need to reciprocate and pay it forward to all these businesses that I love and who have shown love to our family. And therefore, gathering petitions, albeit I only gathered six as I was on vacation, and my name was thrown out, my signature was thrown out because it was illegible, it seemed like a lawful and peaceful way to show my support to all of these businesses. It had nothing to do with politics. Therefore, you can imagine my shock and anger, that to learn that my name and my political affiliation, address, and peaceful political groups that I have donated to in the past was listed in that document, that was posted publicly. It was really a slap in the face. I felt violated. Kathy, you are a big part of these proclamations for Maya. I know you have kindness in your heart. I know you do. The document that went public states, "The three have hurt our body and our relationships. They have hurt the reputation of this city. Do you not see the hurt and harm that this document has caused? Doesn't it upset you?" I have purposefully put a lid on my political posts on Facebook and social media for a reason. I have realized that there's a lot more to life than politics. I'm so sick of politics right now, I could just scream. And most of you know that my number-one priority in life is curing childhood cancer. That's my thing, y'all know that. I will not rest until 100% of children who are stricken with childhood cancer are cured. But the fact that you felt the need to post my name and political affiliation, to inaccurately label my actions as fraudulent, could potentially be harmful to my nonprofit and ultimately to these children. We all know how divided our country is right now. We all know that a business that is strongly vocal about their political partisanship, whether left or right-leaning, can suffer as a result. To you, to these people, to whoever you had help you, who crafted this document, were you trying to hurt my nonprofit by calling out my political affiliation? Were you trying to hurt these children that my foundation helps on a daily basis? Because it's entirely possible that you have. You know, I put my heart and soul into this, to everything I do. I, I live and breathe trying to find peace with Maya's death and finding, trying to find a purpose for it, and trying to do good and to be knocked down like this, it's, I just, I can't even speak. So again, my intent with gathering petitions had nothing to do with political affiliation, and it's just extremely hurtful to me that you felt the need to label me. This document states that Mason and its residents are a shining city on a hill. But in the same breath, it calls me selfish and fraudulent. It states that we must stop the hurtful posts, rumors, and gossip, and then we can have peace and progress together to an even brighter future for our shining city of Mason. This public document is the epitome of hurtful posts. It's the epitome of that, of hurtful posts, rumors, gossip. To whoever wrote this, which I guess is you, you are hurting your own city's precious commodity, the small businesses that fuel our economy, the nonprofits, the citizens of the shining city on the hill that unite to lift each other up and support one another in their most dire time of need. Let's bring back Mason to what it's meant to be, what it used to be, what it should be, a city of love, kindness, support. Let's self-reflect and see how we can actually help one another rather than tearing each other apart. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
I'll tell you, this time is really bad on beards. My name is Mark Lortz. I live at 5145 Minuteman Court here in Mason. I am also the co-owner of The Common Beer Company, which is at 126 East Vane. And I'd also like to address this document that was submitted by Mayor Grossman on September 14th. Unfortunately, although I am a public speaker by trade, or nature, I should say, I had to write this out because I couldn't get all of my thoughts in order to where I felt confident enough to speak ad lib. So here we go. "We feel this document is an intentional, personal, and professional attack on us as both citizens and small business owners of Mason. As citizens, we feel you're discouraging us from exercising our First Amendment rights, and as small business owners, you're threatening our livelihood. You wonder and ask out loud why small business owners do not think you are trying to help when throughout the document, there are direct references and connections made between the people involved and the businesses they own. The obvious inference made in the wording of the document suggests that you recommend Mason residents not to patronize these establishments, as it would be assumed that they are supporters of this recall effort and therefore Democrats and liberals. This is a very disturbing and destructive message for the mayor of a city to be delivering."
Mr. Lortz, I'm gonna stop you right there for just a second. That was never said in that report.
I'm sorry, is it my turn to speak?
It is, but I'm gonna stop you right there because that's just flat, patently false. May continue.
You're not supposed to stop me, Mayor. You're not supposed to stop me.
I can stop you. We're gonna, you may continue, but I just want the audience to know that never occurred in the report, that is just flat false. Go ahead.
Let me, let me back up. The obvious inference, inference, okay. Three reasons why individuals become small business owners. One, to be able to bring a passion to life and share it with other people. To make money for themselves instead of someone else. And to make the community around them better. We are hard-driving, dedicated workers who live in a world of constantly pivoting to change with the times. A good friend of mine once said that small business owners work 80 hours a week, so they don't have to work 40 hours a week. We work hard for the three reasons stated earlier, with making money being the benefit to being able to do what we like and provide a better experience for the community around us. If you ask anyone that comes into my taproom, they'll tell you that it's designed for that very reason. With that in mind, of course, the East Main small business owners were a part of the effort as outlined on page 10 of your document. Have you been along East Main in the last 17-plus years? There's been little to no energy and money focused on that area of Mason, of the Mason historic downtown, by the city and especially by the city councils that have presided in those years. A few examples: Our sidewalks are literally crumbling around us. We have limited to no lighting on the streets and in our lots. We have one public parking lot with 14 spots for 10 businesses to share, among many other things. We constantly see money being spent everywhere else in Mason, and yet East Main seems to have been forgotten. East Main has many great old and new businesses that continually are shown that they are not important enough to the city to spend any, any energy on improving the public works around them or just keeping them usable for our patrons and our citizens. We openly supported Josh Stricula because of the platform on which he ran, which is to revitalize the downtown corridor, including East Main. Your document states on page 18, quote, "The recall was a political play based on lies to elect a liberal Democrat and/or another new member to council in order to elevate current council members into the positions of mayor and vice mayor," end quote. This was and is not a political movement to turn Mason blue or to have specific people take power. It is a movement by a large number of Mason citizens to enact change to the way things are being run in our city. Your document is very specific about pointing out the parties of registration and the voting habits of the individuals involved in an attempt to paint this as a political coup to rally your voter base. By the way, the information about my wife was incorrect, so you may want to have your fact-checkers perform better due diligence. In the end, all you've done in our eyes is to show your lack of understanding of what the real issue is. Bottom line, you are not doing a good enough job representing all of your constituents and their needs, and we want people in place that will. Thank you.
Audience, if you will, could I see a show of hands of people who want to approach the podium? I see one more. I'm trying to gauge whether we should take a quick five-minute break. Are there just two left? Three? Four? Okay, let's take a five-minute break. It's nine o'clock. We'll be back in five minutes.
I will, I shouldn't want to hang these up. And I'll take pictures and see what's there. Well, thank you so much. That's awesome. Yeah, it's weird. Like she was just like out of the blue. Like, I wanted to be a firefighter. Yeah, go for it. So yeah, that's me. Oh, actually. Yeah, I'll put this up. So thank you for bringing me. Nice meeting you.
So they say it becomes for the most part.
Sure.
Okay, Denny gave us the thumbs up. All right, do we have the next visitor? I believe the lady in the beautiful mustard-colored cardigan is coming up. Please state your name and address.
Um, good evening. Danielle Timmets, 5086 Parkside Drive, Mason. Um, I did prepare a statement for the sake of being as concise as possible and for brevity, which you can judge however that ends up. Um, so thank you all for this time to speak about Mayor Grossman's recall analysis that was submitted to the record on September 14th at the council meeting. Though, in the report, Mayor Grossman included my name and party affiliation. I am not here with any allegiance to a specific political party, but rather in support and community with my neighbors in Mason. Following the September 14th council meeting, the report Mayor Grossman authored and entered into the record was brought to my attention while there, and while there are multiple sections and themes that I wish I had time to dive into, I won't bore you all. My purpose for speaking to you this evening is to give a firsthand account of why I circulated the petitions. In March when the pandemic hit, you as a council had a unique opportunity to showcase your work for the businesses of Mason because meetings were being conducted virtually and people had an unusual amount of free time. We were quarantined. We were literally at home just waiting for stuff to happen. What I witnessed, along with many of my neighbors, was a divisive progression of meetings that led to delayed action. I was horrified. This was happening in my council without me even realizing it. On April 23rd, I sent an email to council expressing my frustration at your inaction. My disappointment is documented long before the recall efforts began. We, as a community, have been giving you feedback that you have failed repeatedly to accept. At the August 10th council meeting, the recall statistics were shared and once again, you proved, you, with your 19-page report, that you are unwilling to accept the feedback we are sending with these petitions. Instead of reflecting, adjusting processes, discussing voting records, excuse me, you spent your time as mayor researching names, addresses, voting records, and associations of everyone who circulated these petitions. The recall was done. It had fallen short of the goal. You had won. At that point, I'm struggling to see what your purpose was in developing this report if not to cause division between our citizens and cause harm to the businesses named. When I saw that there was a recall effort, I was immediately on board. Contrary to Mayor Grossman's assumption that the recall petitions were an effort to, quote, "Make two of the three mayor and vice mayor," this had never crossed my mind. I literally didn't even think of it. The first time it occurred to me was when I read it in your report in that first paragraph. My goal was to get a council that was functioning collaboratively. I had watched the four, excuse me, I had watched the four of you divide, obstruct, and stall efforts to support businesses for weeks. I was not following a party, as your report states. I spent two weeks collecting signatures because I believed that our city council should represent and work for all citizens of Mason and not just those in alignment with your beliefs. I drove to neighbors' homes to collect signatures during a pandemic, and I am super weird about going anywhere. Like, I'm not going anywhere and I am masking everywhere, but I did this because it was important. Um, lost my place now because I got passionate. Sorry. I did this work alongside community members of diverse political beliefs and ideologies to send a message that our council should and can be nonpartisan. I reject the implication that I spent this time for some political agenda. This was far more personal to me. I want to see a council that's willing to collaborate and engage in solutions that are both innovative and timely. We live in a city with so many resources. I am here to voice my disdain that these resources were used in an effort to single out citizens and businesses of Mason that disagree with you. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Timmets, I just wanted to thank you for the nice note you sent my wife. We just got that. We're, we're out of town and we just got it. So I just, I wanted to call and say, or not call, but I just wanted to say thank you for that. And she appreciated because she was named in this thing too.
You know, Glenn Garvin, 4974 Lava Court. If I go back six months ago, I didn't know any of you, I saw the names sometimes. The only person I knew on this council was, was Mrs. Grossman. And I just knew her casually from community center or children involvement and things. I didn't have a negative or a positive feeling about this council. I didn't know anything about it. I had probably had a positive feeling towards Mrs. Grossman. And I, when I first heard of kind of things were going on, I contacted her, went over her some things that she had to say. It seemed reasonable to me and I did some more investigation. At that time, I shared what Bonnie Collins said before. I thought she had a, there was a good heart there somewhere and maybe that would come out. I've gotten to the point where I don't think that's true anymore. And Mayor Grossman, I've wrestled with what motivates you to do some of these outlandish things that you've done. Perhaps it's ego, perhaps it's control. Um, but I've come to the determination that unfortunately, I think you're just a bad person. And we've watched you coordinate with the gang of four to defeat measures that would benefit the small businesses of Mason with the only goal of submitting your own legislation so you can take credit for it. By the way, you know, this has been talked about quite a bit, but have you ever gone on record to discuss who was that whispering person who gave that advice to you when we were on Zoom calls to say, "Take credit for it"? Your petty desire to put yourself above everyone else, this council and the city, makes you a bad person. We've watched you bring political party affiliation into these proceedings countless times, and I'm struck by the hypocrisy in what you, in that you do so. Inside the Republican Party, there's a faction that a lot of people refer to as Rhinos. That's called Republicans in name only. And as much as you love to tout virtues and quote scripture and cling to conservative party ideals, your actions speak just to the opposite. You're hypocritical and all of those things. You're quick to claim entitlement and victim status rather than dealing in facts and reality. Your go-to is to claim to be a victim in any disagreement. You lash out and disrespect the community and your fellow council members, but then you reprimand them for doing exactly the same thing. You impugn motive constantly in that 19-page garbage report you did it. You did it to me standing here. You've done it to all your other council members. But if they even dare to do that, you chastise them for the same behavior. The hypocrisy makes you a bad person. I've watched you slander me with untruths and unabashedly refuse to apologize for it. You purposely misquoted me, turned what, turned what I didn't say into something you could be offended by. You had the transcript right in front of you and you purposely misquoted it. In this very room, you had it again and you would not admit that you lied. Not that you lied, even once again with the transcript right in front of you. You have impugned motive against me. You yelled at me for assigning motive to a council member incorrectly. You called me and treated me as a politician rather than a concerned citizen. Then you turned that slander into libel with your petty report that you presented the last meeting where you turned, where you turned that slander into libel. You wrote in that report that I misrepresented what the council has done. Not true. You wrote that I ignored the council's COVID programs. Not true. In fact, I'm even unaware of what even COVID program is presented by this council that I could have, that, that I did ignore. So that again is not true. You said I engaged in sexist attacks. That's quite an accusation without merit. Again, not true. Ms. Grossman, these accusations are without merit and substance, and I demand an apology and a retraction of those things. These are lies and accusations that you've made about a citizen in this, in this town for doing what? For circulating a petition to recall people on this council? For exercising their First Amendment rights? And that, and you, you make these quotes and accusations? That's terrible. The report you published was vindictive. It was filled with hate and malice, something only a truly self-absorbed narcissist would write. Rather than taking criticism to heart, you marginalized it and dismissed it. Your report is not representing the city of Mason. It's riddled with errors. You sat up there today saying that it's 100% factual and true. It's not. You indicate that some of the council members originated and created this recall effort. That's just factually not true. I'll have to remind you that repetition of a lie over and over again does not make it true. Your hateful conduct and ego-driven leadership is a disservice to Mason. It's not biblical as much as you claim. It's not ethical. It's not leadership. It's not servant leadership. It's not responsible. Those things make you a bad person. Tonight, I've heard a couple of people say it before, I'm asking for you to resign from your position. You need to step down from mayor of this town because the way you're behaving is not in the interest of this city. It's in your own self-interest. And I want to thank all the other people who spoke tonight. You've done a fantastic job. There's different people from different walks of life, political beliefs, religious beliefs, but they all have one thing in common, and that's a shared distrust of your leadership.
Mr. Garvin, would you mind coming back to the podium and sharing what programs we passed and describing those? What programs did we pass through ordinances 43 is amended, 46, 51, and 52? Do you know?
I'm sorry.
What they are?
Mayor, it's not his job to know.
This is your, this is your go-to. Are you accusing the person up here and you put them like they're on the stand?
Can you answer the question? You just said I'm a bad person and that I allege you ignored programs.
And now you're interrupting me because you called me back up here. You interrupted Mr. Lortz when he's talking.
Help me.
This is, help you?
Help me. Help me understand. What programs did you ignore? What programs did we pass? Help me understand. I don't know what you mean.
I'm not sure what your reference point is.
I don't know what you mean. You said that.
What, to what? You don't know what I mean about what?
The programs we passed. Do you know what programs we passed?
Program, you mean 2020, 40, 46, and 43? You want to go over that again?
Yes, okay, I apologize.
We can go over that ad. Pause it. That a few times from this stand.
Okay, do you, do you know that we passed economic recovery programs for small businesses in Mason?
Of course we, of course you did in July, but as.
No, they were passed in early, uh, one, April, one and.
When did, when did businesses start seeing the effect of those?
End of June.
End of June? So that's like July, right? End of June's beginning of July. So basically the same thing. So did that happen in March or did that happen in July?
It took a few weeks, but what we did.
Few weeks? I'm sorry, wait, hang on. March, April, that's, let me, hang on, I got.
March 28th was our first discussion.
That's four, eight, 12. Are we counting June or we not? That's 16 weeks. A few weeks. I'm confused. So did you say just a few weeks?
We had, uh, we tabled ordinance 43 briefly so that we could study. And here's what I haven't heard anyone say in this room.
Then you passed 46.
We.
Tried to pass 46 without even reading it to what it was.
Sir, that's not true also.
Oh, that is absolutely true. Even, I mean, you didn't know.
Well, we did a first reading, but we read by type only.
Tried to pass it through when you had no idea how you were gonna do it. You had no idea how you were gonna pay for it. When, when Vice Mayor Gill was asked how he was gonna pay for it, he went.
Mr. Garvin, that's because we had work to do.
So why, so you, so you would willing to pass that with work to do just to pass that through, but 43, you had to keep working over and over and over and over?
As we've said many times over, we wanted to use 46 as a placeholder to show in good faith that we were working on it.
The placeholder.
And some council members.
Placeholder because it was yours and you could take credit.
Some council members and some members of the community mischaracterized it as some untoward effort for some new economic development. That's never what it was.
You said the CDC had duplicity in motive and that they were, that you, that's your quote.
You've not, you've not answered my question.
I'm, I'm sorry. Let's go back to.
The question is about this. No one has mentioned that we passed legislation for small business recovery that.
This isn't where we patch you on the fact for what you think you've done well. Where this is where we're talking about your 19-page garbage egotistical narcissistic report.
All right. I think you're done. I think we're done.
I'm done now?
I think you are. I don't have.
Now you're dismissing me? Thank you for dismissing me, Queen Grossman.
Thank you. What I didn't hear anyone mention, no, I'm not talking, I'm talking to everyone. What I haven't heard anyone mention is what we actually did accomplish. It took seven people. It took at least four votes, but five. And thankfully, we passed with seven votes. And we passed the largest funded or the, the, the most deeply funded and comprehensive programming. Sir, you're, you're talking about certain things in the report, but you're not mentioning what the report also says. Our legislation that we passed in the small business recovery is larger than any other program we can find in the nation. Okay, that's not appropriate for you to yell at me from the audience. And I'm, I'm not expecting a response from you. No, it's not. It's not yours either, Mr. Garvin. This is a public resource. Okay, we need to send the next person up, please.
Hi, my name is Trisha Hilton Mills and I live on 535 Shawnee Lane in Mason, Ohio. That's in Manhasset Village, which is the first subdivision in Mason. So I live in the little houses near the train tracks. Um, and my, my grandma and grandpa lived in Mason. And my other grandma and grandpa lived on the other side of Butler Warren Road. Um, my mom graduated from Mason High School when it was the middle school. And I know some of you have. Maybe not everyone is from Mason. Um, and I wasn't. My parents decided to move out into the country. So I went tomorrow, which doesn't even have a place like this to talk. Um, the only time I've been in this room was with my son's Boy Scout troop. And, um, we came and talked to, I think it was the city manager. It was after a very long night of work and then I brought my son here. And we learned about the new pool and the plans for the new pool. Um, that's kind of the topic that drew me into knowing about the council. Um, I used to be on Facebook a lot and there's a Mason Deerfield page and it is just a mess. And, um, I posted something about the sandbox going away and how my son and daughter would miss the sandbox and got laid into. Now, we all know the sandbox went away a long time ago. And I get it, you know, it's yucky. But, um, I got laid into. I'm like, oh, you know, blah, blah, blah. So then later, I don't know, years, months, don't, I, I can't answer any like real political questions. So later, um, when I found out about this cool pool and my son was really excited and his Boy Scout troop was really excited, um, I'm cruising Facebook, middle of the night. I'm a night shift nurse and a mom. And, um, I don't, I'm not usually awake during the day, except now because I'm a virtual schooling mom who stays awake during the day and now has to work from home as a virtual nurse, watching people with sepsis die from COVID. Um, and hoping to alert their nurses to intervene, to save them. So that's what I do at night and during the day, educate my kids. So when I was talking about the pool, um, Mr. Hunter Law, I, I don't like calling people out. I mean, I don't. And this isn't like a horrible, horrible thing. It's just a, just an example of just like different points of view. Um, I'm not going to be able to find this. I'm not going to be able to back up any of what I'm saying. So please don't ask me to. Um, I was on Facebook and, um, they were talking about the pool. I think Mr. Hunter Law was on Facebook, which was random. I never thought city council people and the mayor like got on the Facebook page. And it was something about like, maybe we shouldn't be putting this much money into the pool. And I said something like, well, you know, not every community has a community pool in Mason. And not every kid has a place to go. And honestly, even those kids that get to go to the Mason pool, some of their parents make sacrifices to pay for that just summer portion to go to the pool. Um, you know, I live in Mason. I'm not like struggling, but we do make sacrifices. We don't belong to a golf club and we don't belong to the community center. And we just send our kids to public school. And we like to do things like go to the Heritage Parade and march in the Heritage Parade and see the veterans and see the firemen get inducted. So when I was talking about the pool, Mr. Hunter Law, I don't like calling people out. I mean, I don't. And this isn't like a horrible, horrible thing. It's just a, just an example of just like different points of view. I'm not going to be able to find this. I'm not going to be able to back up any of what I'm saying. So please don't ask me to. I was on Facebook and they were talking about the pool. I think Mr. Hunter Law was on Facebook, which was random. I never thought city council people and the mayor like got on the Facebook page. And it was something about like, maybe we shouldn't be putting this much money into the pool. And I said something like, well, you know, not every community has a community pool in Mason. And not every kid has a place to go. And honestly, even those kids that get to go to the Mason pool, some of their parents make sacrifices to pay for that just summer portion to go to the pool. You know, I live in Mason. I'm not like struggling, but we do make sacrifices. We don't belong to a golf club and we don't belong to the community center. And we just send our kids to public school. And we like to do things like go to the Heritage Parade and march in the Heritage Parade and see the veterans and see the firemen get inducted. My family was part of the Mason Volunteer Fire Department for many years. They were, they ran the fish fry for like ever. You know, my Aunt Carol, like she's, she's a fountain, like she's here. She's Mason. So I understand there's like a big difference in Mason now. You know, you have my little house. You have some other houses that are a lot bigger than my house and everybody is everybody and everybody's cool. And maybe their perspectives aren't like mine. So I thought about that and I was like, well, you know, not everybody has a pool, you know, not everybody has that privilege. That kind of made me mad at the time. So I kind of banked that. And then I had heard that you didn't represent people that didn't vote for you. And I was so disappointed because it's not what I teach my kids. You know, I'm a volunteer girls group leader. I can't say what it is because I can't represent them in this political environment. And I'm a nurse and I can't be shady. You know, it's like I got fingerprinted. Like if I'm shady, they'll know. Like I don't respect that. I can't. And, you know, I don't want to bring anybody's family to the table, but my grandparents were very, very best friends with the Hunter Laws that owned the farm with the big pretty horses and the lake and they've got new cows there now. And I was three and caught a snappy turtle in that lake while my family was there. And my grandma used to wash that Hunter Laws bib overhauls after his wife died because that was her best friend. And they were good people and they would never have said that. And I just don't want to live in that community. I wrote some stuff down about, you know, why I was upset. I signed that petition and it was kind of because of that. And then, you know, there was another position there. I looked into that, signed that one too. And I just represent that part of Mason that doesn't. It's not that we don't get represented. It's just that we're busy going to work and shoveling our kids to school and just hustling so that we can pay property taxes, you know? And it's expensive. And I wanted my kids to grow up in a small town like my husband and I grew up in. He grew up in Delaware, Ohio. I grew up in Morrow, Ohio. I didn't want to go back there. Their school's a hot mess. And, you know, we lived in Clifton. We went to college. We decided to settle down. We knew the property taxes were insane. We bought ourselves an old fixer-upper, which we never got to fix up because we had to work and then we had babies and that's how that works. But the whole point is, is when I started paying attention to how council handled themselves, and I'm not even saying like one of you or two of you or three of you. It is like two different popularity tables in the high school in junior, in like your junior year. It's some Mean Girls. It's some popular kids. There might be some goths over there and everybody's fighting and nothing gets done. And this is supposed to be bipartisan or nonpartisan and it's not. And I feel like I represent a portion of Mason. Now, I may not be able to speak for them because I understand that everybody feels differently. I can look at the signs in their yard and know that everybody in my neighborhood feels differently than everybody else, you know? And I was not feeling like time was used properly. That report was the equivalent of a burn book in the Mean Girls movie, you know? And I'm not being funny. I'm like, I was an emergency room nurse at Children's Hospital for five years and then went and worked in psych and then worked in adult ER, Narcan-ing people and then telling them they couldn't go pick up their kids because I called CPS to go get them. You know, like I get real life. This was not real life. What is going on here is people either putting themselves in a position because they know people or they want to be somebody politically and it's Ohio and it's a good state to be in if you want to like climb the ladder, you know? The idea that someone would use our city council as a stepping stone or as a place to just be mean to other people is not cool. And I was going to say, after I read the report, it did feel a little McCarthy-ish. And I know that's really triggering for people to say. My first word was witch hunt. Because in Ohio, when you call someone regardless, and I'm not ashamed of any of my beliefs, I don't say them because I don't want to put my beliefs on anybody. Everybody gets their own opinion, but if you ask me, I will. When you label someone as a Democrat right now, it's dangerous. Look at the news because Democrat now means liberal. And liberal used to mean, I want to make sure that everybody has what I have. I'm not talking about communism. I'm just talking about like a place to sleep and some food and shoes. And that document, and I read it and honestly, I skimmed it. It was way too long and I don't know any of those names. The reason I know some of those names is because a nice organization that I work for for young women, some of them work there and they're good people. And I've seen them make crafts in a monsoon at Cotel Park, which by the way, used to be a pool where my mom was a lifeguard. I, I just think if you call someone a Democrat and then you call them a liberal, you're basically calling them a witch right now. And I mean, I know that that doesn't matter. Like, like a lot of you are in positions where nothing I say is going to matter. It might hurt your feelings a little bit, but I felt like that document was just trying, and I'm going to probably say something libel because I don't know better, to, to keep people from making petitions. You know, I'll say one of the names that's on there because I know her because her kids and my kids grade. Joy Bennett lives on the other side of my neighborhood where it's nice, you know? And her kid and my kid were friends for a minute because Mason has like 10,000 kids. And she seems like a nice lady. She seems to be really managing going to work and raising kids and caring. You know, I don't know all about her, but I don't, you know, I would never call her like devious, but I guess politically right now, this doesn't have any small townness to it. And I get it. Mason is like really far from being a small town because we have a ton of money that has to be allocated and you have to look after things like the golf courses, irrigation that hasn't been updated since the seventies. You know, I get that. Like that is a draw. Like we have a tennis thing where we have tennis things and it's important. I get that. Like it brings money in. And I got what they were saying about the pool. When we saw the pool, they said, oh yeah, there's going to be this like big pool on the side where we're going to have like whatever those things are where you have races and you swim and you run and bicycle. You know, I have friends from Kettering who bring their kid down to do that. So I know that that draws people into the community. And once people come into the community, they spend money. You know, I know about what I know about. I can tell you all about being a nurse. I can also tell you that I try very hard to be a good person. I do not come from a good background and I worked very hard. You know, my grandparents and my dad's grandparents, they were decent people. My mom and dad, they struggled, you know? And I know dysfunction when I see it and it's a mess. Y'all need like some marital therapy and to think about why you're here. Because I'm not sure. I mean, you can smile and shake your head and say, you know, we're here for everybody, but I don't feel that. I don't think you know me and there is, there are lots of me's in Mason. Not everybody has a nice McMansion. You know, I talked about going, I talked about going to sign that position on my like brief hours off and somebody was asleep. I had never been in that neighborhood before. It was like some tree neighborhood that had like tree names and it was really nice. But those are not even as nice as like things that used to be home orama homes. And that's just not my life, you know? And I'm cool with that. I'm a pink collar worker. My dad drove a train. My mom worked her butt off to work at GE without a degree. I put myself through college and later I put myself through college again and I brought my kids to Mason so that they could get a good public education. And a tenement of our school right now is not bullying. And what is going on in this council, my eight-year-old and my 12-year-old can tell you is shameful and wrong. What the council is doing is being taught in our school as bullying. And you guys know it. You know you're doing it. Like you can't not know you're doing it. And I know that people come from different places. Like I don't know if that was your grandpa, Mr. Hunter Law, but like I know that your people come from over there and you have farms and that's, you know, there's a lot of you. And, you know, I know that you came to this area the first time to sing at Kings Island. Well, the first time I went to college, I majored in opera performance, you know? So I enjoyed Kings Island too. I just happened to drive a roller coaster. You know what I mean? And you probably sang in a show or walked around somebody in a costume. So we're not different. We just ended up in different places by chance of what we did, who we married, how we went to school, who we networked with, you know? But we're not acting like neighbors. And right now is an exceptionally dangerous time to do that. Right now, calling out people as words that we know are dog whistles for bad things and putting that people are in the Black Lives Matter March when that's so divisive in our little white country town, which by the way, is not that white. My kid is one of the only little white kids in his online class right now. So, I mean, I know that there are people of all different colors and all different faiths. You can just look at the National Honor Society and see that, you know? We have to come together. We have to quit being divisive. We just, we have to. I mean, there's so much cultural divisiveness right now that it's dangerous. You can look at those small towns in Ohio where people are standing on the side of the streets yelling at the people in their little 15-person Black Lives Matter March. We had a bunch of people and I was proud to take my small child, my neighbor and her small child to that march in our little wagon. But I'll tell you, as we walked to the march late, because I work nights and I'm late going everywhere, a gentleman, a white man on a bicycle drove past us and said, oh, you better be careful, man. They're going to blow stuff up. I had to call the police on my way to a Black Lives Matter March, which might be protesting police somehow or just treating black people better because some guy felt like it was a really good time to intimidate two chicks and two little kids in a wagon. That is the seeds we are sowing. It's not a direct line, but that's where you end up. We have to change. America is better than this. And in the same way that I chose to mentor young women, I chose to come to this meeting because this is my hometown and I am better than this. My kids are going to school and being taught to be better than this. And my council should be better than this. It shouldn't be a launchpad, shouldn't be a place to get richer, shouldn't be a place to gain fame. It should be service. And if I learned anything from being a nurse, it's about service. Now, I looked it up. I know you guys don't make very much money doing this. It's, it's the inroads that you get. It's not why necessarily why I would think people would do it. People do it, you know, to hold position and that's what they feel drawn to and that's their service work. But you got to admit, you make good connections. I mean, you're dealing with like big money exchanges in a, in a community, you know? It's hard not to. But there are little people, like the guy with the beard. Like we have, we have a community that could be super cool. I'm not saying we need to turn into Yellow Springs, but we have like a really funky restaurant and I guess a brewery too. Like I haven't been there since I've been to the marathon as a little kid. Like I don't get to go places. Like a Deso looks really cool, but I work, you know? So I don't get to go. And there's, they're doing a lot of stuff and we could put money into that and that would be really great, you know? But I also know that when we bring more corporations into our, our town, we make money off that through taxes. So I can see why that would get the shiny draw. You know, like big company wants to come and put their big company here, you know? Proctor and God came in and we want, you know, we want to support that. But we have these great small businesses. I didn't know how politics worked when y'all got the COVID money. Part of me thought you might use it to get masks and stuff for the teachers. I didn't know what it was for. I didn't get a $50 gift card because I was working and taking care of my kids and I don't read the magazine you guys put out because can't afford to do anything in it and I don't really know any of those people and I don't care. So I, you know, I didn't check my email. I don't even know if it was in there. I think my husband's name is on our sewer bill, you know? He gets all the bills. I get the house. You know how it works? And it's just, it doesn't seem very, doesn't seem very small towny. Now, I know Mason is the biggest small town. My kids go to the Walmart of schools. It's like huge. And I saw what happened to Lakota and they split up. And I don't want to see that for Mason because we are a small little town, even though we're making giant roads, knocking out people's front yards to get there. Stuff happens. But what that guy had to say is important. We will draw people in other ways. We can either draw people as companies that we can make tax money off of. What are we going to spend that on? Or we can use some of our money to support this and have something other than the dive bar next to the haircut in place. You know, it was really cute. We had a train store. That was awesome. When they painted over the mural that existed on the way to MECC when that guy bought the building, like that could have been something our Mason council stepped up to and said, you know what? That's a great opportunity. Can we put a new Mason, can we put a new Mason mural there? Can we put murals on all the sides of buildings? Have something to draw people into Mason that is wholesome. In the same way, my kids going to the pool is a wholesome way for them to spend the summer. Mason's got a PR problem. If you watch our council meetings, it's yucky. I've never posted as a nurse representing my organization on Facebook in a divisive manner. I would lose my job. I don't think the mayor should be able to do that. I don't think the council people should be able to do that. And granted, it's America. You can say whatever you want, you know? America, we can speak of freedom of speech. But I think the person who's in that position should have that forethought not to do it. You know, I don't say millions of people are dying, you know? I will say that my specific job is people with sepsis and a lot of them have COVID. And I, you know, I worry about that and that's why my kids are home and that's why I'm wearing a mask while I talk. We have a lot of problems. We do not want to turn into those little towns. Those little towns don't have as much money as we do. They can't hide it. The old guys that are racist are standing on the streets yelling at people. Our folks hide that stuff in their garage, put it on their really nice pickup trucks and drive downtown. We don't want that. We don't want it under the covers and we don't want it out in the open. And if this leadership acts like that, everybody else is going to ask like a high school student. We don't need that. I'm not sure what the motive was for that report, but I will tell you, as someone who signed the petition, I felt really violated. Like, oh my gosh, why would someone do that? And then I was like, well, I guess they do know what I vote and you know, it's no big deal. And I'm not big enough in whatever conspiracy theory is going on here to merit an input there. But there were over 800 signatures. It wasn't 19 people, 19 pages, you know? We can do better if you really want to. And if you don't want to, please don't be on my city council. I don't want to be in a town that is bad. Don't intentionally want to harm people because they might've wanted to vote against you. In the same way, we all get opinions. We all get a vote. It's unfortunate, you know, but we do. And I just think, I think that's really important. I think, I think it's really, really important. And it's an example. People are stuck at home with their children right now. Their parents might be spending some of that time watching council meeting. I already have to explain to my kids what's going on in the news. I don't need to explain this. And to read a report that calls out a woman whose daughter died. I just, that one I didn't get. I can get that. I get, I asked my husband and not because I'm like the lady who needs to get that from her husband, sitting at the kitchen table where we do our thing. I was like, okay, so riddle me this, Batman. Why was this written? Why did this report get written? And all he could say was, well, it sounds like it's intel gathering for the Republican Party. And all he could say was, well, it sounds like it's intel gathering for the Republican Party. And it does, which is why people think it's a McCarthy list. There needs to be no more us and them. We are all Americans and we all live in Mason. And I don't know what we call people who live in Mason, Masonites, Masonese, Comets, but we all live here. And if we cannot get along in Mason, what the hell do we expect to happen in the United States right now? And I'm just a nurse who works at night and takes care of my kids. And my husband's an accountant. And he's not even a CPA. He's just the one that goes in and sits in a cubicle. We're just normal people and I just don't want it to be screwed up anymore. And I really don't wanna be the grown up in the room. I have to be the grown up in the room at work all the time. You guys are professionals. Don't make us be the grown up in the room. Be the grownups, okay? I can't back up anything I say, Mayor. So if you have any questions for me, I can tell you, I can tell you, it was a couple of years ago when I had the Facebook thing and I can tell you, yeah, those were my grandparents, Bud and Jean Hilton, and they knew Bill in Melba. And I'll tell you, my grandma and grandpa, they built a house up there and the school bought it and then sold the house, sold the land to here, to this, to the Catholic school that's up there. So my grandma's house sits empty. And I can't go to it because, because, you know, she's dead and we don't own it anymore. And it's just empty. Make good choices. Every choice affects somebody. And we all get mad. Say you're sorry. Step back. Think about why you did it and try and be better. Okay? Deal. Thanks for letting me talk. I don't think I did it properly, but I appreciate you listening to me.
Wow, how do I follow all of those? That was intense. Well, good evening, members of council. Uh, my name is Mark Hackey. I reside at 3620 Dunlop Court here in Mason, although I'm pretty sure you all know that now thanks to a certain report that we're all discussing this evening. Um, so Mayor, you submitted your so-called report on Mason failed recall of Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Gilb and Member Hunter Law at the last council meeting. According to you, you did so based on advice from a special group that you attend once a month to study leadership. I find it very hard to believe that a group that professes to understand leadership would advise that you prepare a report that's filled with lies, false accusations, attempts to harm local businesses, and an attempt to crush the First Amendment rights of the citizens you supposedly represent. Now, of course, these are just my opinions. Your report attempts to alter the facts that have been presented to you in this very chamber. As I told you in the past, this effort wasn't about party politics. It wasn't about the fact that you didn't support 202043 in its original form. Instead, it was about your behavior as the mayor of this great city. As a retired military veteran, I spent 20 years of my life supporting and defending the Constitution of the United States of America. I hold very dear the principles that our founding fathers laid when they put forth the Constitution. And I pledged that I would go so far as to give my life in support of it. I pledged to give my life in support of the Constitution. I have watched and discussed as you twist many, what many have said to you in order to put forward your own agenda. I've read your report that claims that as Republicans, we couldn't have possibly been opposing you for the right reasons. Additionally, based on the contents of the report, I can only come to one reasonable conclusion. And that is that this report was an attempt to manipulate voters so they would think twice about signing any future recall petitions and that it was meant to harm any businesses of those involved in the recall effort. You claim to be a Republican, yet you apparently have no issues with attempting to trample over our First Amendment rights. How dare you? Let's take a look at some of the facts. Let's look at the false claims, actually. You assert that this recall was an effort to make two of the three mayor and vice mayor. Not true. You assert that the majority of the effort was spearheaded by the liberal Democrats, and I, these are quotes, by the way, liberal Democrats with the collaboration of the three. Not true. Then you also contradicted yourself by claiming that it was the three who spearheaded it. You can't even keep your lies straight. You assert that the Republican circulators appear to have personal, commercial, or friendship relationships, which best explains their involvement in the recall. Not true. However, I have become friends with several of the business owners since the recall effort began, so I do wanna thank you for that. You asserted that petition circulators also misrepresented the reasons for the recall and did not specify reasons allowed by Mason's charter, which challenges the credibility of the entire enterprise. Not true. In fact, Mason City Charter, Section 11.04, states that "The recall provisions of Section 705.92 of the Ohio Revised Code shall apply to all elected officials holding office under the charter." Therefore, your assertion that you can only be removed for reasons specified in the charter, which are gross misconduct, malfeasance, misfeasance, or non-feasance are also not true since they only apply when being removed from office through city council action. That is not a recall. You assert Republicans were not circulating for ideological reasons but appear to have been animated by personal and commercial interests for themselves and their friends. Not true. You assert that it appears that they wanted to elect new members to change Mason Council's leadership regardless of party affiliation in order to have a council that would do things like give away $500,000 to a nonprofit with sole discretion to give it to whomever they pleased, including the friends and associates of the three. Not true. You assert that the three of the circulators would have obtained very little support had they informed the public of the truth. Again, not true. You're impugning motive and making a false claim that we lied to signers. If they weren't aware of the issues, they were simply led to the ICRC videos, which we're doing tonight, of the council meetings, and they formed their own opinions from there. You assert that they have hurt the reputation of the city. Not true. Your actions are what have hurt the reputation of the city. In fact, you and your husband had, had, you and your husband did that long before the recall effort ever began. You assert that the three of their, and their supporters for selfish reasons told a very different, warped, dark, and false story. So not true. You are the one telling warped, dark stories. I've just pointed out at least eight lies that you have in your, that you had a hand in perpetrating in this document alone. You claim that some made-chamber members supported the recall. While true, this is irrelevant. Your attempt to paint the chamber and its membership as being in any way responsible for the recall effort is obviously a desperate attempt to deflect any blame from yourself. You claim that most of those whose signatures were sought probably had no idea they were being asked to sign a petition upon false pretenses. I would argue that many of those who did sign had actually voted for you and did so based on false pretenses since they mistakenly thought that you were an appropriate person to help lead this city and finally saw you in action and were appalled by what they saw. Mrs. Grossman, you are without question one of the worst leaders I have ever encountered. I've seen a lot of leaders in my time, many very strong, very effective leaders. Unfortunately, in my opinion, you are not one of them. You are also the one who divides this council. We've heard that many times tonight. Although you blame the others on council for doing so. You're the one who impunes motive on others while accusing other members on council of doing so. You are the one who takes the words of anyone who would dare to criticize you and twists them to your own purposes in an effort to discredit them. Your heinous attacks on the small businesses who you claim to care about and the citizens of Mason must stop. In fact, I'm here to insist that you resign from council. You are a cancer on this city. You are an embarrassment to this city. You are an ineffective leader and the time for you to finally do the right thing is now. Resign. Let us move on to getting things done for our city and get people in, get, I apologize. Getting our city back in the hands of people who care about Mason and not just furthering their political careers. Thank you.
Mr. Hackey. Mr. Hackey. I just wanna remind everyone that the, the identification of the data on the petitions with regard to Republican and Democrat and the whole effort, that was the premise of the article in The Inquirer that you were, I think you were on the front page of The Inquirer. And you were very involved in the, in the recall, obviously, and, and social media and all of that. And you never spoke to me once personally. Yet you have come into this chamber via livestream or in person. You have insulted me personally. You've insulted my marriage. You have not acknowledged the good work that we've been trying to do. You've identified the behavior of council as a reason for the recall and yet you chose the two most well-mannered people on the council to target for recall when we had two others that were eligible. And we know, it's proven that they have a really hard time sometimes following the rules. They've done a great job tonight, though. Thank you guys very much. And here's a question. Yes, they have. They've done marvelous. Here's a question that nobody's answered yet. Who were the candidates? I mean, you did all this work and circulated petitions for five weeks. You started the recall in April. There has to have been replacement candidates, but that's never been revealed. But that's never been revealed. I think it's relevant. I think it's relevant. And I absolutely respect your First Amendment right. And you need to respect the First Amendment right of others to respond to your false attacks and claims. That's only fair. Okay.
You know, I'd like to.
We all have, we all have a First Amendment right. And we've been listening diligently to you tonight. Sir, you're next. Name an address, please.
My name is Ryan Cleary. My address is 5156 Minuteman Court. It's on the Concord Crossing subdivision, which is very near to downtown. I wanna thank you all for supporting and, and representing our city. I know this isn't very easy job. And I also have jobs that aren't very easy. And so I, I appreciate you being up here and hearing people out. And I really, I hope you are listening. I know it kinda gets difficult as we continue to talk. I wanna keep my story real short. You know, I live on the Concord Crossing Street. If you ever drive by, you'll see my two beautiful daughters outside playing. I really admire that a women leader could be in the, a mayor of a town like Mason. You know, because that gives me hope that my daughters could grow up to have a leadership role, which is what I try to instill in them every day, you know? And so what I, what I'm struggling with is, is when I, when we take it from leadership to politics. I know that there's a lot of politics that have to play in this game. But I wanna tell you a quick story about safety. Because now politics is causing a lot of concern with safety in our neighborhood. We have some very fine police officers that were in our neighborhood two days ago because somebody put a very threading letter on a car that was parked near a Trump-supporting sign. Now, it's just another political sign. It's just another political, and, and just, oh, there's a lot of political things going on, right? And so that continues to drive the diverse, the decisiveness in our neighborhoods. And when you come through our neighborhood, there's a lot of different signs. And the, and the challenge that we're having right now is that safety is a key element. My kids were playing right next to that car all weekend. And this, now, the politics that we're having, it's not leadership, it's politics. We really need leaders in our country right now. And we need leaders that are ready to stand up and not put some 19-page document together and stand on that as it being the truth. We need someone that's willing to admit that they're not always right and to say, hey, someone else might be right and I should listen to them. That's the person that I'm trying to teach my daughters to be. And I'm hoping, hoping that at some point you heard some of these people today and what you get out of it is that you need to listen a little more than you talk. All of us need to have that lesson every now and then. But I really hope with the leadership roles that you all have, and I know I've met several of you, I'm really hoping that you take what these people are saying throughout our community who are putting you in these leadership roles and you work for them. Think about them and not just ourselves. Because that's ultimately what a leader ought to do. So I'm calling on you all to continue to be the best leaders you can be. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing there is none. The next item is item 23 on the agenda, comments from council outside of their committees. Is there anyone who has something to offer for item 23 tonight?
Mayor, can I propose, since the audience is done speaking and we are done with our agenda, that we adjourn the meeting?
I just wanna make sure nobody has anything and, but that would be the next item on the agenda. Is there anybody who has anything to report for item 23? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn, please. That's item 24. To make that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, night.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you.